Good evening, La Sura, and welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting for December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. We'll start off tonight by entertaining a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved Huntington.
Thank you, Councilmember Huntington.
Second, Krogman.
Thank you, Councilmember Krogman. Any discussion? Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to do the roll call vote for the approval of tonight's agenda, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Fattalies.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby.
Aye.
Councilmember Krogman.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Heng.
Aye. Thank you.
We'll now move on to our consent agenda. All items on a consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the City Council at least two days in advance of the meeting. Excuse me. That will be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. We've got a plethora of items on our consent agenda tonight. They are our City Council minutes for November ninth, two thousand and twenty, our special City Council minutes for November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, our City Council minutes for November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, our special City Council EDA minutes for December third, two thousand and twenty, our dispersment approvals through December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, our surplus property declaration, our two thousand, twenty twenty City Administrator Performance Evaluation Public Summary, our twelve wide south taxi lane pavement reconstruction project, approve the pay estimate number two to Castor John Incorporated for the CASA twenty-two electric conversion project, and finally, our personal actions. And I go ahead and get a motion to go ahead and approve tonight's consent agenda.
Sullivan, so moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan.
I'll second that. This is Krogman noting that there are corrections, corrected minutes were sent out for November twenty-three.
Right. Everybody should have those minutes that were sent out this afternoon, correct? And then we once had a chance to go ahead and read it. Is there any discussion regarding anything on the consent agenda tonight? Hearing done. Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to do the roll call vote for approving tonight's consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Fattalies.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby.
Aye.
Councilmember Krogman.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Heng.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Administrator Krugel. We now move on to our public comment. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Persons wishing to make a comment must sign up in advance of the meeting and issued provided identify themselves by providing a name and address. Administrator Krugel, do we have anybody that wishes to address City Council tonight for public comment?
Mayor Heng, members of City Council, I have not had anybody reach out prior to the meeting to request public comment. We may have some individuals here tonight for the truth in taxation hearing, public hearing, a little later, but if there is anybody in the, in the audience that would like to comment, just there's a raise your hand function, please raise your hand at this time.
Give it a little time here.
Mayor Heng, I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand at this time.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to go ahead and close public comment.
Fabulous, so moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Fabulous.
Schleter's second.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Schleter. Okay. Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to do the roll call vote to close public comment, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Fattalies.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby.
Aye.
Councilmember Krogman.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Heng.
Aye.
Yeah. Okay. So, we are now going to move into our regular agenda. And I just want to remind everybody that's listening, we will have a public hearing after the entire presentation is made by our Finance Director, Mr. Dowd. So if you're standing by when we go ahead and open up the public hearing after the presentation for the budget, we'll certainly be more than willing to listen to what you have to say. With that said, first item on the docket is six alpha, which is our truth in taxation hearing for the two thousand and twenty-one city of La Sura budget. Administrator Krugel.
Thank you, Mayor Heng, members of City Council. Tonight, the way the process will work, Mayor Heng did a good job of explaining the process. The Finance Director, Zach Dowd, will give the presentation and I can chime in and provide some additional information if that's required. But after that, we're going to go through everything. We're going to go through the levy. We're going to go through the utility rates, the governmental fee schedule and the utility rates, which after the public hearing is held, there are four separate agenda items that have four separate actions that are requested related to the budget. So we'll do the presentation and then we can open up the public hearing, close the public hearing, and then potentially take action on the budget after, after all those items are completed. So with that, I'll turn it over to Finance Director Dowd and he can, he can give the presentation on the two thousand and twenty-one proposed budget.
Welcome, Director Dowd. Nice to have you here tonight, sir.
Thank you very much, Mayor Heng. Happy to be here. Thanks very much, City Administrator Krugel, and the City Council for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm like, like it was alluded already that I'll kind of go through the truth in taxation, public hearing, and then we'll answer questions at the end that they, they may come up. So timeline, just for reference for everybody, this is, the budget's basically an eight-month process. We did start it back in May. I didn't add that to this timeline, but I did provide that information back on the twenty-third of November. But basically, it's September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, the City Council approved the preliminary levy in the budget. That is the ceiling for the levy. The levy can go down after that, but it cannot go up. So December fourteenth, that's tonight, we're going to plan is to approve a final levy in the budget, matter of public comment. And then in December here, after this meeting, I will certify that to La Sura County for collection in two thousand and twenty-one, along with the Minnesota Department of Revenue by December twentieth, two thousand and twenty, which is the deadline. Next slide, please. Okay, two thousand and twenty legislative session impacts. Sometimes there's some major changes in, you know, in LGA and para and/or things that would relate to the government, government entities. This year was pretty boring. No major changes. There was a small change in LGA. It'll be about a twenty-five thousand dollar change in revenues for the city of La Sura. So there's a small bump in LGA that they're budgeting for. However, that was adopted prior to the COVID nineteen pandemic. So we're still expecting that. There's been no changes coming down from legislative, legislation that I've heard of, but that's still the plan. There is no changes in para contributions at all. Last year, we went and had fire and police increase their para contributions from sixteen and a half to seventeen point seven percent for the city employer portion. But there is no changes to para this year coming up in two thousand and twenty-one. So overall, relatively boring budget, boring session for legislature, but they've been focused on COVID nineteen, so it makes sense. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is for reference, everybody, just so we have an idea of moving forward when we're talking about percentages and dollars. What does a dollar mean to each resident or an average home? And what does a dollar mean for each, the city or the percentage? So what, what this means is one percent tax impact or one percent change in taxes for a resident is to be about fifteen to sixteen dollars for them on an average basis for an average home, again, for the whole year. And then a one percent tax levy increase is about twenty-six thousand dollars for the city. So basically fifteen to sixteen dollars per resident or per household is about twenty-six grand for the city overall. CPI increased one point seven percent from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty. It's based on the Minneapolis-St. Paul first half region information. So did some reference items for us to touch base back on, just so we can have some, some point of, you know, point of area we can reference back to. Looking at the two thousand and twenty-one proposed budget, this did change from the preliminary levy that was adopted and would have been seen in any tax statements that went out in November of this year. We did adopt an eight percent preliminary levy increase, unsure of some items that would happen, having some contingency plans in there just in case things were to change with COVID nineteen, things were to change with overall health insurance costs, insurance costs overall with work comp, with general liability that ensures all of our buildings and our vehicles that we have. Any of those major changes that we didn't know about at that time, we put a large increase or a large contingency planned together just to make sure we had enough money if we needed to. Again, we're setting that ceiling. A lot of those things went away. We didn't have a whole lot of things going on. A lot of direction from the council has been try to get that budget back to zero, and that's been city staff's goals to get that levy impact or levy change back to zero percent, even though we adopted an eight percent. So we settled on the same thing we did on November twenty-third meeting, a point three six percent change. So that's about a seven point seven percent or seven point six four percent change from what was adopted in the preliminary levy. So the, any tax statements that you see right now are going to be incorrect and going to be high based on the number that we're providing tonight and the plan proposed two thousand and twenty-one budget and levy. I don't have any, nothing's changed since anything on the twenty-third. So if you have any questions, then most things we can answer them at the end. But the impact on tax bill, again, that point three six percent, what does that mean for a homeowner? As you can see, the middle line there, two hundred and six thousand for a home, it's about a three dollar change overall. That is, again, if your home did not change value. We cannot, the city cannot control any values of homes. So if your home increased ten percent in value, so it went from two hundred to two hundred and twenty thousand, there's nothing the city can do about that, and you will pay more for taxes next year, unfortunately. That's good that you have an increased value of your home, but it is, it is a downfall of having increased values that you will pay more taxes for those things. So again, having a relatively stable home value, I know there was a few that had larger increases than others. Last year, we saw that. This year, we didn't see a whole lot. They were pretty few and far between, or at least a lot less relevant this year in the increases. So I assume that everyone's home value is staying fairly similar. Next slide, please. Tax capacity information. So this is the other end of the formula that people don't really see a whole lot, is how do we get our tax rate? Like, how do we get our number for our tax rate and figure out the percentage that is? Here's the number we're looking at. So basically, what happens is, is if your, if your home was taxed at one hundred percent of the value, it would be taxed at ten percent of your home value. That's considered a hundred percent tax rate in the state of Minnesota. So for example, if you had a two hundred thousand dollar home and you were, ten percent of that home is two thousand dollars, you would pay two thousand dollars for taxes. That would be a hundred percent tax rate. So this is the other end of that formula. This is that tax capacity number. That's how we figure out our tax, our tax rate. This year only went up point one one percent. As you can see, the change overall is very, very small. Last year, we were seeing somewhere around nine to, I think, thirteen percent at the beginning when we first saw that change in two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty. So we had a large tax capacity increase, but it had to do with our home values going up so much. This year, we didn't see that. So we have to take that into consideration. We're looking at the tax rate that, basically, your tax rate's going to change the same amount that your tax levy changes because there's no change in the tax capacity. Tax capacity is the denominator number in the tax rate. So again, no change in tax capacity means that anything changed in the levy is going to change your tax rate overall. Next slide, please. So this is our final two thousand and twenty tax rate. So this is our tax rates that we currently pay for two thousand and twenty. The most recent numbers I could get from the county on a, on a short-term basis. They didn't have preliminary two thousand and twenty-one numbers all in and everything ready to go in their system, unfortunately. So, and those preliminary numbers can be kind of skewed because we don't know what the final levy numbers are going to be. So it's always good to look at final numbers. As you can see, La Sura is towards the top end of that at seventy-two point seven six percent. That's our tax rate. If we did have the point three six percent tax levy change tonight, you can basically add that to the seventy-two point seven six percent and get somewhere around, you know, seventy-three point one two percentage as the tax rate. But then you got to subtract the point one one percent change in tax capacity, we'll get somewhere around seventy-three percent is what our number is going to be for next year. That's the, that's at least the two thousand and twenty-one number. There are some other things that change with farmland and ag, but in short, that's all the valuation or that's all the tax rate comparison goes year over year. So as you can see, we're kind of on the higher end, but again, we're a smaller community. If you're looking at Mankato or maybe even a, you know, Kasota, they're a small, small town, and Mankato is a huge town, so they can spread those costs over lots more people. Kasota's so small that it's hard to compare those two. You know, we'd love to be down there, but we have a lot of debt. We have a lot of things going on in the cities, street projects that we're finally doing, which is great. And those tax rate numbers, you know, have, have a big impact on those things. Next slide, please. Perfect. So as we can see, what the black line and what this, what this graph is trying to show is, are we growing with our city? So we want to make sure that the city is not growing exponentially faster than their city is, right? We don't want to be way ahead of the curve and be having our tax rate go skyrocket. But we also don't want to, you know, lose a bunch of value and not keep up with our city when we're growing. We need to be able to make sure we're handling those new residents and new, and new growth that we see in this city. So the, the top black line is our tax capacity number or how much it's changed over year over year. And then the numbers below or the bar graphs below are where the money has gone for the levy. So a total levy is the top of the bar. But we have a small EDA levy, which helps fund our EDA Director or Community Development Director. We have a debt service levy, which covers any debt that we have within the city that is not covered by special assessments or utility rates. And then we have the general levy, which is basically our operations of the entire city. You can kind of see the proportions there, but overall, we've pretty much grown with our city. As you can see, two thousand and eighteen is probably the closest we got from that bar to the black line. I think our rate at that point was like eighty-one percent, and we've come down from there since then. So like I said, we're in the low seventies now. But at the point, at this moment, we are growing with our city and staying pretty proportionate to where we were at, even back in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, then all the rates or the levy number was less. Our tax capacity number was less as well. So we have less money to spread over, less people. Next slide. So as you can see, I kind of mentioned and alluded to that, that eighty-one point one seven percent tax rate that you saw back in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen year where it was really, really close to that black line to the bar graph. Estimated right now, seventy-two point nine four. Like I mentioned, it was right around seventy-three. Seventy-two point nine four is the estimated tax capacity rate for two thousand and twenty-one at the current point three six percent change. Key changes to the general fund overall. So this is the general fund and how it works is the levy is a backend number. We put all of our expenditures in, put all of our revenues in, and whatever the difference is between those to make a balanced budget is what we use for that levy. So our contingency has been set at a hundred thousand dollars. We've used it up the last couple of years. Last year, we used it up for the river and the floods, things that we had to pay for, which happened to be in, you know, a big, big event that we had to pay a hundred and twenty thousand dollars or so forth. But contingency dollars that are set aside just in case something were to happen, things that are unplanned, on, on, you know, unforeseen. Any of those dollars that we do keep or we have above that forty percent fund balance policy, as you can maybe remember it back to the two thousand and nineteen audit, we are at like thirty percent of that, which is means we're underfunded. Our, our fund balance is too low or our savings is too low that we have in the general fund in order to run operations. We have a forty percent fund balance policy. So if that contingency is set properly, we would be able to basically cash flow a hundred thousand dollars every year. That would increase that fund balance. And then that fund balance will then be used to, to fund projects within town, street projects, so we don't have to bond for those things, new equipment for our staff, new parks, do other things like that that would cost money normally, or we have to bond for those things. We could then put that money into a CIP or CEP, which we will talk about in a little while, that we can buy something back to our residents for. So that's what that contingency is set for. It doesn't mean that it's earmarked and just going to be put into a savings account and we're never going to see it again because that's what we have that fund balance policy for, is to basically move that money out of the general fund or operations fund into a project fund. So we can, we can fund a project later on that we, that would be nice for our residents to have. But the overall increase of expenditures from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one is two thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Very, very minimal increases in expenditures overall. Our revenues did see a decrease, though, and the reason why is we want to be more conservative, not knowing what COVID nineteen is going to bring in two thousand and twenty-one. Obviously, its revenue's done fifteen thousand. We had, did have an increase in LGA, which I had mentioned and alluded to earlier. Our CASA maintenance agreement, which we just negotiated with the county, increased by twenty thousand dollars. That's based on the county road that have in town, that we have in town that we maintain, as in snow plowing, taking care of those things. Those numbers are then figured out per amount per mile, and then we get reimbursed for those, for those items. So our maintenance agreement was negotiated very well, I would say, and got a twenty thousand dollar increase in that, which is fantastic. So that in the backend means our operation tax dollars increased by about one thousand six hundred and eighty bucks. So basically, a flat operations from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one.
Director Dowd, last year.
Yes, sir.
So to be clear in regards to the contingency, if that money's not used by special projects or CIP, CEP, this would be money that typically would go into the 4M fund for investment purposes. And if we had some sort of a shortfall throughout the course of the two thousand and twenty-one fiscal year, that money could be available to go ahead and take care of one of those unforeseen situations, especially because of coming out of COVID, hopefully sometime this next year.
Correct. Exactly what those things are for, is that that money is just set aside for the year or if something comes up. If it doesn't come up and we have that money extra laying around, great, we're going to put that into a 4M fund or some good interest on it. Right now, it's not very good, but normally it's above one percent or our hope is one percent. And we can move that money into a project fund. So we're able to do more projects later on and fund them through taxes and use that tax dollars for good and not just holding on to those things. That's, that's not what a city's made for. It's good to hold on to money, make sure we can do projects, but at the same point, we don't want to be, you know, hoarding millions and millions and millions of dollars either.
Thank you.
Good, good question. Thank you. Perfect. The key change is the Community Center Fund. The main thing that we did put in here for the Community Center that was not in here before was a sixty thousand dollar contingency. It's the same plan we have for the general fund overall. It's basically, it's not earmarked for anything. We're just going to hold on to it and put it back into the Community Center Fund. However, the Community Center currently has a six hundred thousand dollar deficit. There's some change in there, but we'll use an easy number of six hundred thousand dollars as the deficit currently. So basically, the Community Center is negative six hundred grand. We got to have some way to pay that back. So the way we, we decided to do that was to create a contingency plan for ten years. Basically budgeting sixty grand every year to put away and try to offset that six hundred thousand dollar deficit over the next ten years. There is a potential change that I had heard some rumors of or had some rumblings of, and I want to make sure that I put this on the slide, just to make sure that we all had information before we move forward, is that opening the indoor pool from September two thousand and twenty-one through the remainder of the year. As this mentions that, to currently, the current budget of point three six percent is going to have the indoor pool closed for the entire year or at least for the, for what the foreseeable future is in two thousand and twenty-one. With that, the indoor pool is the most expensive area that we run within the Community Center that has the least revenue sources coming into it. And that's why it was identified by city staff, by PBC and by City Council, that that may be an item where we need to cut. If we need to cut something in order to keep the tax levy low, we may need to cut the indoor pool. So I've heard some rumblings that possibly opening it after September two thousand and twenty-one, which would be after the indoor pool, outdoor pool closes in August of two thousand and twenty-one. So that increases about sixty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars to run it from September two thousand and twenty-one through the end of the year. And then you can see the tax levy change on the right-hand side there. That basically puts you at two point nine five percent. Or it's roughly just over two and a half percent to run that pool from September two thousand and twenty-one through the end of the year. And you can basically double that number in order to run it for the whole year, if that were, you know, if that were something that the City Council wanted to do. Basically, take that two point, I don't even know what it is, two point six percent and, and double it and be about five point two percent for the entire year to run it from January first through May and then shut it down during the outdoor pool season, June through August, and then put it back up in September through the end of the year.
Now, is that just, Director Dowd, is that just the utilities and the actual operating costs, or is that also include salaries for lifeguards and things of that nature that we'd have to have for that four months?
That would include everything. So that would include lifeguard time. That would include utility costs, operations costs of that, of that indoor pool facility.
Thank you.
Yep. Next slide, please. We'll go through that. We can, we can make any changes and have any comments from City Council at that point, you know, later on. But for this point, I just wanted to put it out there so we have a number to look at when we're, when moving forward. Overall, this is just going to go through numbers here. Revenue sources, as, as numbers show, it's about point one one percent change overall. As you can see, our investment or things kind of tanked a little bit. Chartered for services are down. Find the forfeitures are up, and we've got a lot more of those. And then intergovernmentals up as well, based on LGA change. Being more conservative with revenues is kind of where we ended up going with this, this year, is that we wanted to make sure that we were more conservative with revenues, but then knew where the additional revenues are going to be. Intergovernmental is basically that CASA maintenance agreement and the LGA increase. Next slide. I believe this is like a graph. Yep, so this is just a graph to show over the last three years, where's it at? Basically, two thousand and nineteen actual, two thousand and twenty budget and two thousand and twenty-one proposed. And they go from left to right on each one of those bar graphs, just comparing where we're at two thousand and nineteen actually. And then we're planning on being in two thousand and twenty-one with the two thousand and twenty budget already being adopted. Just making sure that we're being consistent with where the revenues are coming in or where we're expecting revenues to come in. And as you can see, we're very consistent across the three years that we're looking at. Next slide. Pie charts. People like looking at percentages sometimes and making it a whole of, here's a hundred percent of our revenues, where the heck are they coming from? And if sometimes numbers don't speak to you, sometimes percentages do. So I like to provide a couple of different ways for people to look at things. Forty-three percent of our revenue comes from intergovernmental. LGA is a huge, huge item for us. It's about, I think it's about one point one million dollars next year in two thousand and twenty-one. It's a huge revenue source. If we lose LGA, we're going to be in some serious, serious issues in this town. So we need to make sure that we have LGA. I like to keep that known with the City Council that we are basically dependent on that to run operations within this city. If we lose LGA and lose funding for that, it's going to be detrimental to the city overall, and we're going to have to make some serious, serious changes to our budgeting moving forward. But taxes are the next biggest force, twenty-nine percent. Transfers in, this is that transfer in from the electric fund that funds operations as well. It's a five hundred thousand dollar transfer in. And then license and permits and miscellaneous figure out the rest of the percentages, pretty close to a hundred percent. And then we'll talk about expenditures next. So general fund expenditures, we like to look at these again the same way we did revenues and kind of make sure that those numbers are being consistent year over year. This one has changed quite a bit over the last three years, just being the fact that we've had a little bit of reorganization, a real little bit of changes overall, and also some salary allocation changes with where our time is being spent at. We seem to see a lot more time being spent in the utility funds than in the general funds and the operations funds overall for the city. So we have accounted for those things in two thousand and twenty-one, which is, it's why you're seeing the decrease in the general government, the public works overall team, is that you're seeing those changes made at that point. But again, overall, point one one percent change, same as the revenues. Again, we always do a balanced budget in the general fund. Wherever it was equal expenses, that's how we come up with the tax number. On to the next slide here. This is the graph I'd like to show year over year to make sure we're doing the same thing, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one again. Again, as you can see, kind of a decrease in the general government, the public works. Again, we have had some reorganizations overall within the city that we've tried to make, we've had more time spent in utility funds overall. Did a big project in two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty to get meters switched out and, and time spent on the utility month billing software that we, we did. We also have this transfer out that is brand new. I didn't mention that previously. That transfer out is moving money that we have currently allocated for IT or information technology items into an IT fund. What this is going to do is make all of our new funds, which basically means utility funds, be basically paying for some of the IT stuff. Right now, all of our IT things come right through Jasper and then they all get caught at the general government or the general fund overall mostly. We have a small, small amount that are paid for by utility funds, but so many is computers, so many is work done by our managed service company. Because we, we do a third-party IT company. If anything's needed in by them, if they have to come in and do server work, so on and so forth, it was always paid for by the general fund. And Jasper and I have made a big deal this year to try to get a fund together to put some money away for IT if we need it. So that's the big goal this year is to move the money out of general government, out of public works and get it transferred out and actually get it into an IT fund. So we know exactly how much money we have every year for IT and we can monitor that to make sure that we're not just overspending just to overspend or we have to, you know, get an IT thing done right now. And we want to make sure we have money for those things. So being more fiscally responsible is able to create an IT fund to make sure everyone's paying equally for those things. Onto the next slide, please. Pie chart again. We'll look at where we're spending most of our money. Public safety is the biggest one again. That's mostly police. There are building inspection services in there as well. That's considered public safety. And that will be our building official time. Public works is our next, and then general government. Transfers out is the, rounds out the hundred percentage tile. But public, public safeties are by far our biggest expense and most likely will be in the, into the future because it's always the most expensive item in the budget for the general fund is the police. All right, we'll talk about CIP, CEP. So that was basically the levy portion of our, of my discussion here. That's having to do with the levy. If we have any more questions on the levy, I can most certainly answer them. But we'll move on to CIP, CEP. But we'll move on to CIPCEP. Nothing has changed since the 23rd meeting. So I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on this, but basically we're, we're planning out the next five years of our of our time and trying to say, what are we going to need in five years? Just so we have enough money available to buy these things instead of having to bond for them. And that's been a big thing for the city council and city staff is to be able to budget for items and be basically fiscally responsible and aware of things that are coming up instead of just shooting from the hip and saying, I don't know what's coming up. I have no idea what's going on. Let's just, you know, bond for once we need it. Especially when we have no large, large items of 100, 200, 300,000 items that are all needed in one year. Um, the airport is the big item that you look at right away and say, holy cow, there's a lot of money there. But remember, that's mostly funded by the FAA. Um, a lot of that 90, I think 80 to 95% somewhere in that range is either FAA or state. Um, depending on the project. So our local portion is actually spelled out below there of how much our actual local portion is or our city portion. Fire department, again, large items. Every time the fire department comes around, it just seems to be 100,000, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And that's just what it is. Unfortunately, we can't change the price of what items are. We just need to be able to provide them with the tools that they needed in order to do their job. So it's been very good to have um Fire Chief Jesse Wenatchen on these conversations. He's been very instrumental in trying to get these things in front of city council, in front of city staff. Instead of coming to us at the last minute and saying, these things are 10 years old and need to be replaced next year, where's the money at? We need to be able to do these things. SCBA is is um one of them that we knew about maybe about two years ago, but um basically just came to us and said, we need to get these things moving forward, which is good. But we want to make sure we can plan for those things. So putting together a five year plan for the fire department has been instrumental and we kind of have a, an idea of what they need in the future. Library, police, those items are just kind of uh operational items that are put into capital projects in order so we can make sure we have enough money to place those things. On to the next page. Um, I believe this is the rest of the public works and recreation. And we broke up public works and our recreation, we broke those out into individual departments. Public works is mostly ma- maintenance of the streets overall. Although you do have some, you know, big, big items. Now we have a plow truck next year that needs to be done. Um, and then we also have some projects in there that we are waiting on or having only a small part of local share. As you can see, maybe that Bruce Frank Field is one of them that we only have a small part of local share, but the rest has got to be raised before we even do that project. So those items are listed there. Um, again, this is a planning tool, not a binding document. Um, we are trying to get these things ahead of schedule and looking at them before we have to get them. If we don't have to get them, we will not do them, but we want to make sure that we have a plan if they're needed. Um, recreation, same thing, breaking them out by area. So we have a better idea of how much each individual area or each individual service area of that community center um is going to cost in order to to operate. Next, please. And we'll spell water and wastewater. As you can see, something new on the water thing is there's some red items there. What those red items mean is that those numbers are going to be bonded for. We're putting them in the CIPCEP plan. So we have an idea that here's what I'm just going to cost. So we're not just bringing that on the council that we're going to need, you know, $3.6 million for a Lowe's on water tower. We're going to need 1.2 million dollars for a well. And we want to be able to plan for those things and and have them and have the numbers in front of council. But at the same point, we're not paying cash for those things. I want to make sure that that's noted that we don't have five or 4.8 million dollars just in a, in an account sitting there waiting to do these, the water tower and a, and a, and a well. And that's not the amount of money the city of La Sure has. So um those items will be bonded for and then be paid over um 15 to 20 years, depending on what we can get from the PFA. Um, wastewater, same thing. It was listed there. Again, a lot of the wastewater things came up because we've had to deal with MRF Puck for the last few years. If nobody knows what MRF Puck is, that is the Minnesota River Valley Public Utilities Commission, which was a the utilities commission with the city of Henderson. Um, that has been an absolute monster to handle at times for the city council because we had to approve stuff at city council, but then it had to go to MRF Puck to approve, and then it would be denied. They would have to come back and forth and back and forth. Um, that got dissolved. Oh, boy, have to remind me again, Jasper, beginning of 2020 or 2019?
Yeah, it was the end of 2019, I think November of 2019 is when it got went into effect.
Okay, that's what I thought it was, but I wanted to make sure before I said something. But that has been absolutely, you know, instrumental in figuring out what we can do for the wastewater. What, you know, being able to plan and do smaller projects instead of having to fix detrimental items that are going to, you know, basically we shut down the wastewater plant and then it's a big pain in the butt. So we want to make sure we're able to fix those things prior to. And I know council member families has been, was instrumental in that, in that process. So we appreciate that, that city staff. Next, please. This is the electric fund and the stormwater fund. Um, again, this kind of rounds out the last bit of the utility funds. Electric fund, as you can see, there's a main street substation improvement, about 2.2 million dollars planned for 2022. As you can see, that is going to be bonded for. And then we have some stormwater management plans. Um, stormwater has kind of been neglected within this city overall for the last years that I've been here. Um, the years I've been here, we've actually tried to move forward with the stormwater. Um, previously was paid for by tax levy. So if we had any change to stormwater or had any problems with stormwater, it had to be levied for or use operation dollars for. Um, in 2017, we began the stormwater utility fund. And that has been great to put some money away for those stormwater projects. We don't have to levy for those things. Um, collect a small fee over every month for a resident based on the size of their property. And then those get paid and then that gets used for stormwater projects overall. So we don't have flooding in basements if we get the stormwater to the river or wherever it needs to go and not in your home. Next page, please. That's going to finish up CIPCEP. That is basically number two on my list. Uh, moving into the utility fund budgets. Overall, um, mostly stay the same for major changes to the utility summaries. Um, with that new software or NISC, as I would, as I, as I will reference in multiple times during this presentation in the utility summary, but NISC is the new utility bill software that we got in 2020 or went live with in 2020 February. That has been instrumental in getting us actual real revenue numbers and real actual usages. It's been great to have that system on and be able to run reports and get real numbers. It's been, you know, it's been able to grab items, grab, able to grab water meters, get information to us way quicker and way easier, which means we can get to the city council way quicker and way easier than we ever have in the past. And that's why those numbers and revenues may be down a little bit is because we were using numbers that we saw out of the um previous software and those have been, have been accurate. We were using numbers that we were, we're getting off. But if you can look at actuals between 2018 and 2021, you could see a major change in those things. Again, those are major changes in, in being able to accurately bill and being able to accurately get information out of the utility billing software. And the major changes in expenditures overall uh is bond payments. We had two leases that we did in 2019. One is for equipment and one is for meters. Um, and we will, and we will pay for those things over the next 10, 15, 20 years, depending on what those leases and bond payments are for. We also had a salary allocation change from 2020 to 2021 based on actual time spent. So by city staff, we went analyzed where people are actually spending their time. Most of the times actually directors and where the directors are spending time, myself I'll use as a reference that I may have been 50% general fund in 2020, but I've spent a lot more time in the utility funds in 20 or in 2020 now. So now in 2021, my time will be spent more on utilities and I can move instead of 50% of my salary being out of the general fund. Maybe it's only 35% of my salary and the rest 15% went to the utility funds based on where I spent my time. Um, and then transferring money to newly created IT fund like I had alluded to earlier. Every fund is now moving money into an IT fund in order to have that IT fund fully funded and be able to provide in information, technology items throughout the city and not just have the general fund pay for those things. Next slide, please. So we're looking at um rates for 2020. Um, basically we're looking at about a uh I believe it was a 2% raise in in rates, correct Jasper, if I'm not incorrect? I believe it was 2% we looked at.
Yep, that is correct.
Okay, uh, just want to confirm before I did that. But yeah, 2% raise in in rates overall. That's the meter fee and the um usage fee. Um, again, we have the tiered rates. The biggest change that we're looking at in 2020 to 2021 is adding a basically fourth tier or a super, super user um tier. Is it anything that you're using over 100,000 gallons in a month? Their renewal rate will be $4.85 versus just having the three tiers of 20,000 and above. Um, again, the reason for that is because our biggest users are the reason why we're doing those water towers, those wells. And that's the reason why we need to do those items. So in order to do those items, we have to be able to pay for them. We want, we don't want all our residents to have to pay for those items that, you know, if without those big, big users, we wouldn't need them to have, we would need to have them. So we would like to have those bigger users pay for those added that fourth tier in there.
If, if I could, uh, Mayor City Council add just to, to clarify. Uh, these tiered grades are like your, your federal income tax brackets where you pay the tax for that bracket. Um, you don't, you won't, for your first 10,000 gallons, you pay that 332 uh for the next 10,000, you pay the 338 and so on and so forth. Uh, just to make sure everybody understands how that works.
Yes, that's by month.
Director Dowd, just to be clear, we've had the conversation with our industrial users. So they're, they're aware of these changes that are coming for them.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. We can go to the wastewater fund, I believe is the next slide. I'll take the back water fund. We'll go back, go back a little bit retreat. Um, not essential water rates. So not essential is your sprinkler meters that you have on your home. Um, nope, go back, non-essentials. A more, more slide forward, not essential rates is what is your sprinkler meters that you have on your home, if you have them. If you do have them, we changed the rate, as you remember, maybe from 2019 to 2020, we changed it from like 20 bucks to $5. Did the actual cost for the meter and make sure that we're able to replace that meter if something were to happen to it um at the end of the life. But basically we're looking at a 2% change in rates and adding that fourth tier in there for 100,000 and above. Is, is the two changes we made. You got a temporary, a 2% change is 10 cents per month for, I would say 75 to 80, maybe even 90% of our customers have a 5 inch meter or a three quarter inch meter or, or this sorts. I believe the next slide is wastewater. There we go. Um, same thing for wastewater. We looked at updated revenue numbers from our utility billing software. We have those bond payments for equipment and the meter leases. And we have a salary allocation change from 2020 to 2021. And then transferring that money into that newly created IT fund. Again, very similar to the water, but wastewater, we always have an issue with cash flow within the wastewater fund. As many of you all know, we have a giant, giant payment that we have to make to PFA every year. Which ends up being about 1.2 to 1.3 million dollars um every single year for that wastewater treatment plant that goes until 2027. So because of that, we are always looking at revenue numbers, trying to make sure that we're able to cash flow positive because currently we are just short of a million dollars negative in the wastewater fund overall, and it is our poorest performing fund. Um, only because expenditures always seem to go over revenues. And trying to figure out additional ways to create revenues, additional ways to look at items. To save expenditures has been a constant battle for city staff. And it's by far our hardest fund to, or hardest fund to manage because wastewater is funded by usage. So if you don't use it, we don't get any revenue for it. So win, lose, lose, win, whatever way you want to look at it. We'll touch base on the next slide. The next slide is going to be the rates. So because of the loss in revenue we've seen from COVID-19, so as we've mentioned before in city council meetings and in PBC meetings, we're about $600,000 or so short of revenues in 2020 based on where we projected to be in 2019. It has to do with the COVID-19 pandemic and our biggest users not using water. When our biggest users are shut down, which has happened back in March, April, May, um, and maybe some June, slowly coming back with operations has, has helped. But not completely funded um all of our lost revenues. So we're about $600,000 behind. I don't remember the millions of gallons. Do you have that off your top of your head, Jasper? If the millions of gallons were down treated?
I want to say it was 80 million doll, 80 million gallons so far uh this year that we haven't treated compared to what we, what we did last year.
Correct. So that, you know, that's a significant number when you're looking at, at rates based on usages again. So because of this, we have to adjust rates overall. And the city council and PBC had both agreed that we needed some sort of change and that change is going to come into effect of a 7.8% change in rates over um the next year. So, and that is 100% based on usages. Unfortunately, we can't, we have to be able to cash flow and have to be able to make our bond payments. And being a million dollars in the hole is not good. Luckily, the city has pooled cash or basically cash in one fund and we allocate those each individual um fund that the city operates. The city operates, you know, 25 or ish separate funds overall, and we all have it in one bank account. And then that's able, you know, we're able to use that negative cash flow. You know, we have negative cash in one fund, but we have positive cash in another. Basically, that's out to zero. But being a million dollars in the hole for the wastewater fund is not going to work and um PFA has told us many, many times that we need to be able to get out of debt and be able to have a zero balance or higher. So another way to do that would be a 7.8% increase. $25 is what you'd paid in 2020, 2695 is what you'll pay in 2021. That's proposed. And the flat rate was 1285. We're looking at 1385 for 2021. We know it's a significant increase. We understand that at city staff. Um, we have to make payments and we have to make bond payments. And if we don't, we default on those. And that is a huge detrimental item to the city and we don't want to have to do that. So um, it's been personified to city council and city staff and and PBC. Hopefully that, you know, in the future, we can be able to cash flow this fund after 2027. But basically just getting there is, is our biggest, biggest difficult road ahead. Any questions?
Zach Johnny Bubbles. Say, um, the loss in revenue, does that take into account the uh the decrease in uh lost water? We now know what the, what we found some of the water that has been missing out of our billing system, right?
Yes.
By right, that should now have increased what our wastewater usage is. Correct? Now that we know where, right?
No. No, and some of it is maybe, maybe got back from that billing suffer, but a lot of it had to do with that water leak on Dobby Lane. That was a major, major component that we were just pumping water right back into the ground.
Okay, we also had a loss in revenue based on the uh centrate money, correct? So we were, the city was being overcharged in 2018, 2019, and that was corrected in 2019?
I believe you're talking about electric, but I could be wrong.
No.
Um, this is Jasper. So I think there's a couple of moving parts here. So I think um we did realize some increase in revenue because of the, the, I guess, water being identified um as not being used or not being billed. Um, but we did see a reduction in some of the usage because we did fix that lit, that leak on Dobby Lane. So those things kind of equal out, um, I think is what Zach's saying. Um, but really we, we had another thing that happened in, in 2020 is it's been kind of a dry year. So we don't have as much um infiltration and intrusion, I and I. This is the industry term that we normally do. So um, you know, we're not seeing as much flow because of that. Compounding that with, with COVID-19, that's where I think the, the, the full 80 million gallons comes from. Um, so, but I, I think as far as um the uh centrate, I think that's kind of what you're referring to. Uh, council member families, the centrate issue, that has been resolved. Um, where the billings uh were uh potentially being double billed for, for some of the centrate usage to the city of La Sure just by the, the formula that MRF Puck used. Um, now we're kind of revisiting old, old things that, that we've talked about. Uh, but that is a portion of it and, and that, that was included in the budget um for 2020. Uh, but then, you know, 2020 was, was greatly affected by COVID as well. So a lot of these things, it, it's hard to actually realize them because there's been so much change in just normal operations throughout the city. Um, not with us, but just with the usage, if that makes sense.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, I wasn't quite following. I wasn't quite part of the whole MRF thing as much as maybe Rich could share our public services director was. So apologize about that.
This, I've got a question also.
Go ahead, Scott.
Now that we're looking at a 7.8% increase in rates for wastewater has, have we finally reached the point where it's feasible to look at trying to monetize some of the product coming out of the wastewater plant? Basically the water, the solids, whatnot. It probably wasn't feasible before, but is it going to be feasible going forward?
I'll have city administrator Kruegel answer the question. I'll pass.
Sorry, council member Schleter, could you repeat the question? I had something pinging in my, in my headphones.
In the past, it probably was not feasible to try to find a way to monetize the water coming out of the wastewater plant. Whether we could use it in any manner, whether we could find a way that we could sell the solid waste products. I mean, when we're looking at bait increases this high, we might be reaching the point we can monetize some of that.
Uh, yes, um, now I follow, I remember. Uh, so the, the, the final product that we have are AEQ bio solid product that uh we have as a final product. Right now, what we do is we, we did have difficulty actually getting rid of it. So um what we have right now is a contract where, where So what we have right now is a contract where where egg producers can come pick it up for free. I think initially, there was an idea that this this product could potentially be used as a fertilizer and and be sold and monetized. We haven't been able to realize that because of just some different things, nutrient contents, things like that, that we we have to monitor metal content within that biosolence product. So right now, I I guess our our biggest concern is getting rid of it right now. Because if we don't, there's potential for actually fires to start in 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 that area, in the biosolence area. If that if that stuff gets wet, it starts composting and it can actually start on fire. So we've worked over the last couple of years, even when Merpuck was around, to to secure some some sources that we can actually get rid of it. But, you know, we we will continue to look at that. If we can sell that product some sometime, yes, that would be great and that would help out with revenues. As far as the water reuse of the facility, right now, we can only use the effluent, the the water that's treated, that's going into the river for what's called gray water. So we we actually have a bypass where where we can use that at the plant and and do things that 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 we can use gray water for. Uh, we're, we want to try to expand that as much as we can, which will then decrease the amount of usage that we have at the plant. But right now, that's that's what we're limited to and that's that's regulated by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency as far as what that water can be used for after it's been treated. So, you know, we're we're following industry standards. If there's things that are out there that 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 could be possibly monetized, it's on our, it it would be on our radar and we would look at it. Because, you know, we we realize that these rates are are high. They're, you know, comparable to what we see in in some of our neighboring communities with with newer treatment facilities. You know, I call ours newer. It's it's, you know, twelve years old right now, but it is newer. You know, it was a twenty twenty million dollar plus facility, which is a which is a huge investment for the community. But if there is a, if there is something out there, it will be on our radar and we'll bring it forward to city council.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may address Zach and thank you. It might be concern on the part of some, even some council members who may not be familiar with the history. With regard to why are we having to pay so much for bonding up until twenty twenty-seven? Could you briefly explain what happened? Essentially explaining that there was a time when we weren't making payments and that's why we're catching up now.
That's correct.
Yeah, sure. I'd love to do that. So when the bill, when the bond or when the bond was taken out in two thousand eight, and the project was started in two thousand eight, we had a PFA bond. What that is, is that PFA bond is able to basically be reimbursed. So we just would request money from the PFA and pay that contract draft. So in in essence, when we pulled that bond out, we should have started to raise rates at that time in order to pay for that facility. So in two thousand eight through two thousand fourteen, we made no rate change increases. We were making million dollar payments every year or close to it. Every year from two thousand and eight or two thousand nine, I think it's when the project finalized, till twenty fourteen, when the city of La Sure went back to the PFA and said, we can't afford this now because we've made a million dollars of payments and now we can't afford it. So basically, poor planning and not CIP CEP planning by council, city staff at that time has then had to be basically quadrupled in order to pay for projects that were bonds that we couldn't afford in two thousand nine through two thousand fourteen. So now, and from twenty fourteen on, we've had to pay for those bond payments, basically coming out of a negative, trying to get back to a positive, make maintain those bond payments and also fix the operations at the at the wastewater plant. As the as the aging facility happens and as it occurs, we have to fix items as they get older. So poor planning in the beginning ends with detrimental effects at the end. And we have to fix the operations if something were to break, if the centrate breaks, like Fably said, customer Fably said previously alluded to. Some other big item, a dryer breaks, those are huge, huge numbers, items of millions of dollars of 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 cost and most things. So if those go down, we have to fix those things. And now we're we're bonding for something that we're still paying out a bond for. If everything would have went perfectly, this bond would have been done in twenty twenty-one. I believe or twenty twenty-two was the was the year that the bond was supposed to be done in the original two thousand eight agreement with the PFA. Because we in twenty fourteen, we had to go back to the PFA, they extended that payment until twenty twenty-seven, lowering the payments per year, but still sending out the bond payments and paying essentially more interest, just like you want a mortgage on a home. So those things of paying off items that we did not have money for, not raising rates at the right time and and planning, and also fixing operations and trying to offset a deficit are all things that are playing against us and are in against the city of La Sure right now with these rates. We don't want to raise rates. City council doesn't want to raise rates. City staff doesn't want to raise rates. But we have to make payments. We have to make the operations work. We have to be able to treat the wastewater that comes out of homes, out of businesses, so on and so forth. And these are the rates that we need to make to even offset some of our operations and not go further into a deficit.
Good explanation.
Okay, we'll move on to electric. I believe that's the next slide. Sure hope so. Electric fund, perfect. So looking at electric fund overall, we're seeing a decrease in electric revenue as well. This is again based on the COVID nineteen pandemic. Updated revenue numbers from based on twenty twenty actuals is what we're using for the twenty twenty-one proposed. An increase in bond payments for again, some equipment that we bought and a meter lease again in twenty nineteen that we did. And salary allocation change based on actual time spent. We already are were, and we do transfer money over to the IT fund as well. That wasn't a very significant increase in the in the in the electric fund overall, so I did not make that noted. But the biggest change is is operating revenues. We've seen about a million dollar decrease in revenues from electric usage. Also has to do with our large, again, large industrial customers, our large commercial customers that were shut down during the COVID nineteen pandemic and did not see usage revenues. However, our obviously expenditures go down. We don't pay for that revenue or for that electricity to be used in the city. But with then, we don't see the revenues for it. So as more electricity is used, we have a basically a ten percent markup on any of the electricity in order to fund our operations. On that ten percent markup is what we use in order to fund all of the employees and everything else that we have to fix within town. And that's what we use. So if the revenues aren't being used, electricity isn't being used, we can't collect our ten percent. That hurts us our bottom line. Now, we pay less and we but we earn way less than we than we pay. So again, expenditures are down, but revenues are down even more based on that ten percent markup. Um, next slide, we had an electric um, utility rate study done that is still not completed at this point. We had some feedback from our electric utility rate study groups, which was done by DGR Engineering. DGR, that was, sorry, I talked really fast there. But they are an engineering firm that specializes in electric fund rates. And we had them complete a rate study for us. We got some feedback from them, but we want to make sure that the feedback that we're getting from them is one hundred percent accurate. And we want to make sure we're getting the right numbers and get the right information to city council in a timely manner and not spring anything on city council or PBC that would make a detrimental change to any one of these rates. So we decided to do a small increase to most of our customers based on information. I do see one typo that I already have right here is that large industrial service and time of use should be one eighty and not one ninety-five. Based on what DGR Engineering is seeing is that our rate for just accessibility, just our base rate is high for our large industrial customers. So we were just going to keep that at the same for this moment, but obviously I did not put that in the slide. So that should be one eighty. I apologize about that. I will make that change on the utility rate funds that I that I confirm with the. I think I have it on the word documents that you guys got, that city council and the mayor got. But I want to make sure that that's that is not correct. It should be one eighty. Otherwise, you're seeing a small change. The biggest one, like I said, will concern on residentials. Eight fifty is what you're paid in twenty twenty. Based on what DJR is saying is that that is low. So we did a small increase of to ten fifty, two dollars a month. We thought that's reasonable for our our residents within town. That is a per month cost, two dollars per month and based about fifty cents a week. Trying to make it a small change versus a large, large increase or a large change overall based on what we're hearing from our utility rate study preliminarily. So again, small changes is what we're trying to do and not make any detrimental changes to any residents or any or any businesses in town. Those are our service charge rates. The next slide is our utility rates, like actual usage rates. So actual usage rates, the biggest change that we're seeing is demand. So what demand is, is that the initial startup or the initial surge of electricity to start up any one thing at one time. So if one business starts up all of their equipment at one time, there's a huge demand or a huge surge on our electric field or electric power grid that costs us more money by our electric service provider. So because of that, we have to offset those changes in demand or our costs in demand. And we have increased those exponentially for October through May. Not as much through June and September, but mostly October through May, just based on our usages that we're seeing in those time periods. Based on information from our large industrial and our large general services, that they're creating a lot more demand in those off months than we had previously expected or previously thought. Based on, again, information from our DGR, electric rate study information. So those going to be, that's not going to affect any residents at all. It's only going to affect our large businesses. But the biggest thing, like I said, is is looking at residential services overall. Again, we'll focus on those. Basically, right now, we're paying about ten point two cents per kilowatt hour. But right now, we're looking at ten point five cents, a small change. I believe that's like right around two, I think it's three percent, two and a half to three percent, somewhere in that range for residential kilowatt hour change from year over year. Franchise fee staying the same, undergrowth fee is staying the same. Those two numbers are not changing for anybody overall. We got information back from, like I said, our engineering or the DGR engineering electric rate study company that those numbers are fine based on what we're getting. We're getting the revenues that we're that we're planning on. So there's no reason to change something that we're getting the revenues for that we feel are substantial enough to to fund operations. Next slide, please. Stormwater utility fund. Again, nothing much change except for the updated revenue numbers based on twenty twenty actuals from the new utility billing software. I am also close to finishing that audit. I cannot wait to be done with it. But the stormwater utility fund is, in short, with my audit, what I'm doing as the finance director is making sure that every parcel in town is being charged to stormwater utility fund so that not one person is, you know, being missed in this thing and and getting an unfair advantage over any other residence or any other business. What this stormwater fund is for is for being able to do those stormwater projects that we're seeing with Casat twenty-two that we just did. Casat thirty-six in the future, Casat thirty-seven in the future. Any one of those roads or any one of these stormwater areas within town, we have money set aside to do something with those without having to affect taxes. Without having to wait for a tax levy increase in order to do a project. We're able to do a project at any time, whenever we need to, based on this, and also be able to fund projects like Casat twenty-two without having any tax levy impact. There is zero tax levy impact for the five point five million dollar bond that the city took out for. It's all paid for through utility funds. You won't see it, like I said, you won't see that tax levy increase, which is a great thing to not have to pay more taxes for getting a new road. That was a great, great deal for the city, great deal for the county, and yeah, I think great deal for the residents overall. But updated revenue numbers based on the actual that we're seeing, hoping to be done with that audit by the end of this month. And then everyone will be paid or paying or have a bill for stormwater utility within the next next year. So hopefully those numbers will go up through my audits, but completed. Next slide, please. Stormwater rates changed a little bit. Right now, the base rate is nine dollars and fifty cents. There's a formula to figure out. It gets the max acreage times by the ref number, which is like one or one and a half, and then multiplied by the charge, the base rate. Right now, it's nine fifty for the base rate. Next year, we're looking at ten forty-five. I believe that is a five percent, no, that'd be a ten percent increase in stormwater rates. That is following the plan that we did when we implemented the project or the the fund back in twenty seventeen. I believe there'll be one more year of rate changes that we're planning on. And then those should level out based on what we're expecting for bond payments for the Casat twenty-two project and upcoming Casat thirty-six project. Next slide, please. Refuge fund. This was negotiated by our city administrator this year as our as our contract was up with waste management. I think he did a great job administering that contract and and getting some good rates for us. Our rates did go down for our refuse costs, but they went up for recycling. As may, and maybe, maybe everyone knows, but maybe not. The recycling costs have gone drastically up because nobody's taking recycling anymore. It ends up being just a second garbage can for our waste management rep is will descend abusing it as garbage and not for actual cycling. So the cost to get rid of recycling has gone drastically up for waste management. And they've been eating those costs for the last three, four years. And now they're saying that they need to increase their rates for recycling. So the overall rate change or what residents are going to see is going to be very, very minimal. But it it does incorporate a reduction in our refuse costs, but it's an increase in our recycling costs. They kind of offset each other in essence. But we were going to see recycling increase either way, based on the fact that waste management is losing money for the last three to four years based on our current contract. And with a negotiated contract, we will have to pay whatever the market rates are unfortunately for those things. Next slide, I believe that's where the refuse rates are actually at. So as you can see, we'll talk about the ninety-six gallon container, which is basically our most popular, ninety-six and sixty-four. Twenty twenty, you paid twenty-six dollars, and twenty twenty-one, you paid twenty-six dollars and ten cents. As you can see, the base rate went down. That's the actual refuse cost. But the recycling went up over two bucks or just under two dollars. And the tax is based on those three things added together and then multiplied by nine point seven five percent, which is the tax rate on refuse costs. So very, very minimal change. It's eight cents, twenty-two forty-seven to twenty-two fifty-five for our sixty-four gallon. I'm folks, but ten cents for most people, ten to eight cents, somewhere in there for a refuse change from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. So looking at overall, all utility charges, we're trying to figure out how much it's going to cost for resident overall. This is a very big item for the city council, for the city staff, to make sure that people are able to afford an increase that we're that we're looking at based on our operations and based on the fact that residents may or may not have seen an increase based on their job and whatnot. So refuse change, we're looking at, I put twenty nineteen in there just so you had a reference point of where were we at in twenty nineteen versus where we're at in twenty twenty-one. Mostly what I'm looking at is the change between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty, which is the far two right columns. So a ten cent change in refuse, seventy-five cents change in water, six ninety-five in sewer. Four dollars and one cent in electricity. Again, two dollars of that is the base charge. And then seventy-one cents for stormwater overall. Total change, twelve dollars and fifty-two cents for resident. This is per month. Or a change of about five dollars thirty-five cents. So the average customer will pay about two forty-six next year. Again, this is average. And then in twenty twenty, they would have paid two thirty-three eighty-six. We'll move to the next slide then. Not hearing any questions. Governmental fee schedule. So this had a lot of changes on it, so it was really hard to document these. And I apologize about the language saying that I'll highlight all the changes because there were so many, I just forgot to highlight them all because there were so many. But I wanted to make sure that I had noted the big ones that we changed. Most of them have to do with planning and zoning. Having the community development EDA director involved in a lot of those things and becoming the planning and zoning person within town, that she has really adopted that role and really tried to look at that wholeheartedly and and make changes. But basically, we added a lot of a lot of items, just different items overall, you know, adding some bee permits, add some chicken permits, interim use permits, different permits that we did see that we saw in other communities that they're they're collecting revenue for. They're getting permits for it just because we want to make sure that our city's safe and we want to make sure that everyone's being safe within town. We also added some escrow amounts. And escrow, what the escrow is, is basically an upfront payment for the city overall for any sort of application or amendment that they want to do. Just to make sure that we're able to cover our costs of outside services. It has nothing to do with city staff time. City staff time is more than we just end up losing that, you know, we we charge a set fee, four hundred dollars, five hundred dollars, six hundred bucks, whatever that may be. That's our city staff time that we estimate. If we have more city staff time, we end up losing money on that, which is okay. But we want to make sure we're able to pay our pay our engineers, pay our planner, pay our, you know, other items that we have to reimburse, legal fees, other things like that, that we want to make sure we're able to pay without having to front that out of pocket from tax dollars. Because what what really becomes a problem is when a resident or a business in town takes advantage of those things, does a bunch of different items, does a bunch of amendments, bunch of applications, then gets denied. And then we have to send them a bill for everything and they don't want to pay it and they won't pay it. And then we have to write it off or pay for it with tax levy. That's the worst, that's the worst possible scenario for the city. And we've seen that a couple of times and we don't want to see it anymore. So we're adding escrow amounts, basically being able to collect the money upfront. So we're able to at least collect some of our money back and not have taxpayers pay for those items. So we don't think that that's fair as city staff and I'm hoping that the city council agrees. And we also updated the language that any activity that you that you, you know, amendment, application whatsoever, you will be charged to reimburse the city for any of those legal planning and engineering expenditures. We did not explicitly list that in twenty twenty and previous. We wanted to explicitly list that in twenty twenty-one moving forward so that we're able to collect those back if if an application or an amendment may be denied and then the resident or business is upset about those, about that decision. The biggest rate changes that you're seeing are the biggest items that you're seeing for rate changes overall is we reduced the rates for rental fees. is we reduced the rates for rental fees of rooms within city hall. We wanna be able to use those rooms and not few people not be able to use them because it's twenty bucks versus five dollars. So if they're not being used, might as well boost the usage of those items, and we take five bucks for renting, you know, city hall room downstairs if you wanna have a conference or whatever else. We wanna be able to, you know, have a place for residents to go if they wanna be able to work remotely for something or whatever else, or hold, you know, Zoom call or whatever they may be able to do right now. Reduced fees for preliminary plats. We wanna encourage development in town. We're really lacking with development, and the community development director has been, you know, trying their best to get the development moving on, and we're trying to be able to do what we can. And our preliminary plat rate we saw was a little high, so we wanted to reduce those fees so that we can get some new plats in town. We increased our fees for amendments, vacations, one-off applications that we're seeing due to staff time, just not being covered under the twenty twenty fees. And then we increased our airport hangar lease fees based on usages, based on usages and based on what we're seeing for fees in other cities.
Next slide.
If I, if I may really quickly about the airport hangar fees, we didn't, we didn't increase them, we just updated them to what was in the last lease that was sent out and signed. So it was, uh, it's from last year, but technically, we're just kinda updating it.
My apologies.
Problem.
So one change that needs to be made that was not on the governmental fee schedule that the city council saw is that city staff reviewed the cogeneration policy on Friday. That was Rich, Rich Kucher, public services director. That was adopted in May of twenty nineteen. It was a two hundred and some, two hundred and twelve page document that he reviewed on Friday. And in that document, in that cogeneration policy, we included a behind-the-meter fee based on additional staff time needed for calculations of the cogeneration, which could be windmill, it could be solar, anything that you're generating power on. Takes additional staff time and additional calculations in order to get that basically net meter out and the bill out to customers. Based on that policy, we were supposed to be charging that fee. We never have. And that didn't get put in that governmental fee schedule, so we wanted to make sure we got that added this year. Based on our calculations of what are costs for each resident that has cogeneration, because what happens is, is every month they get a bill. But then at the end of the year, we have to take a reconciliation of all of those based on the rate that we get from MMPA, which is our power service provider. It says, here's the month we should be paying for cogeneration at the end of the year. We have to recalculate all of the bills for the rest of the year and figure out, do they owe us or do we owe them? Based on that staff time, it takes about two hours, and it's about sixty bucks per hour, so that equals about ten dollars per month's charge. So city staff's looking to add that into the governmental fee schedule, basically as an amendment to that governmental fee schedule that the, that the city council sees in front of them.
Director Dowd, how many accounts do we have that are using cogeneration? Any idea?
Believe it's ten.
Okay.
Could be a little less than that. I believe it's about ten though. Not very many, but it is something to be known.
Well, before we go ahead and open up the public hearing, does anybody on city council have any questions for Director Dowd or for our city administrator regarding anything that we've covered? It's a lot of information. Seeing none, I want to entertain a motion and open the public hearing for our truth and taxation, public hearing. Councilmember Fabelis, who was the second, please?
Schleter, second.
Councilmember Schleter, any discussion? Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to roll call vote to open the public hearing for our truth and taxation.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Fabelis.
Hi.
Councilmember Huntington.
Hi.
Councilmember Kirby.
Hi.
Councilmember Krogman.
Hi.
Councilmember Schleter.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
And Mayor Haig.
Hi. So our public hearing is now open. Administrator Krugel, we have anybody from the public that would wish to address city council regarding truth and taxation?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Haig, members of city council. Right now, I do not, we have six people in attendance tonight. I don't have anybody with their hand raised at the moment. But I think we, you know, make it fair and, and see if anybody would like to, like to talk, and if they would, we ask them to, to raise their hand, and I can then unmute them, and then they can make their comment, and we can record that comment into, to the record for this, this budget cycle. And then city council could take those, those comments into consideration for the next four agenda items that are related to the budget. At this time, I am not seeing anybody, but I think if we give it, you know, give it thirty, thirty seconds, because it's, like I said, there are six individuals in attendance tonight. It would be fair. So Mayor Haig, I will, I will leave it up to you to, I'm still not seeing anybody raising their hand. If, if, I'll leave it up to you to, to call it when you feel appropriate and, and request a motion to, to close the public hearing.
Let's give it thirty seconds more, Administrator Krugel.
Yes, sir.
Gotta make sure that everybody has a fair opportunity here.
I'll, I'll set my email in the meantime to see if I, if anybody had sent any comments to me via email, but they have not. So far, I did work with an individual to get signed on tonight. He is, he is available, but not, no comments, so.
Okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing for our truth and taxation.
So moved.
Who was, who was, who was the first one to make the motion?
Sullivan.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Second, please.
That's all. I'll second it.
Okay, any final discussion before we close the public hearing? Seeing none, Administrator Krugel, if you do the roll call to close the public hearing for truth and taxation, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Fabelis.
Hi.
Councilmember Huntington. Councilmember Huntington.
Hi.
Councilmember Kirby.
Hi.
Councilmember Krogman.
Hi.
Councilmember Schleter.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
And Mayor Haig.
Hi. So what we're being asked to do tonight, gentlemen, is we're asked to go ahead and basically approve three different resolutions and to also entertain a motion when it comes to regarding our CIP CEP. So with that said, the first one we're gonna go ahead and entertain is the budget item for the levy adoption. Can I go ahead and get a motion to approve the levy adoption?
Mayor, Mayor Haig. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Sean.
Councilmember Kirby.
We're gonna vote on the budget item levy adoption now?
That's correct.
I just wanna make a, a quick comment before we vote on this. I've had an opportunity to talk to a lot of the sewer residents, and you know, there's, there's no doubt, we've gone through probably one of the most challenging years any of us have, will ever go through, including our parents and grandparents, and, and our community suffered quite a bit, and the community center has really taken a, a heavy hit with memberships and, and just participation. And if I'm not mistaken, Jaffrey, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the community center has probably been almost closed as much as it's been open since March. But I'm, I'm feeling, I'm feeling like things are gonna change here in the next several months with a lot of exciting news with vaccinations and things like that. And when that change does come, and when that confidence comes back with our, with our community, I think we're gonna get a pretty positive reaction towards the community center. And it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be really tough to sell a lot of memberships if we're missing one of the most pivotal entities of that, of that community center, and I'm talking about the indoor pool. And what I would, I would like to recommend is that we take this time from January through September and just try to reevaluate ways to remarket and rebrand our, our community center and, and re-market and rebrand our, our aquatic center over there. And just kind of entice people to, to use it more, and I, I think if we take those nine months to, to look at different ways to to resell things there and to, to create more interest or maybe find some partnerships or sponsorships. I think, I think it would be much, much easier to the next council to sell the, sell the community center and, and have the support we need in that aquatic center that we need to, to keep it open. And I would like to, I would like to make a amendment to the resolution R twenty twenty dash zero three nine that we include the, the community center pool from September through December. And I would like to hear what other council people have to say if they have any.
Mayor, this is Councilmember Krogman. I believe that motion is inappropriate. You can't amend something that's not on the floor.
Okay.
It doesn't make sense to me. You'd have to have the regular motion, then you move to amend it, and then you come back and vote again. You can't, it doesn't make sense. Otherwise, if you defeat this motion, you defeated the whole, the whole budget, the whole levy.
I will, I will, I will retract that, and I will wait for, I will wait for a, a motion, and, and I will amend it if I feel it needs to be amended.
I understand. Don't, please, Councilmember Kirby, don't misunderstand me. I'm not trying to stop. Don't defeat the whole thing, wind up nowhere.
Right, right.
Yeah, and I certainly understand exactly what you're saying, Councilmember Kirby, and that's why I asked the question earlier in regards to the contingency fund. Anticipating that on the chance that we do get through this COVID virus and the vaccine is able to get out to everybody hopefully by the summer. I certainly understand exactly what you're saying, and I certainly agree that we're gonna have to do something to market our, our indoor pool. Because that is something that approximately twenty people within the community use for water walking and for water aerobics, something like, things of that nature. And quite frankly, in my particular opinion, I would think that if we look at changing the, if we look at increasing the levy, we know that for a two hundred and six thousand dollar house, it would cost that individual seventy-five dollars a year to go ahead and open up the pool for the year. Now, yes, it could be argued that we're talking four months of the year, so we're talking one-third of a year in order to do this. Well, that one-third of the, that one-third would equate to about one and a half, one and a quarter percent above and beyond the point zero, the zero point three six percent that we're currently at. And then we can't forget the fact that we're also looking at about twelve dollars and eighty-two cents in addition to that zero point three six for our utility increases for water, electric, wastewater, stormwater, and refuse, as we just learned, and we, we've talked about quite a bit. In my particular thought, I would think that the contingency fund should be maybe the vehicle to use instead of going ahead and going on the premise that we might be able to open up the pool. We really don't know what's ahead of us, as we really didn't know what was ahead of us this past year for COVID. That's just my thought. I'm certainly open to listen to what other council members have to say.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Krogman. I, I would suggest that we're gonna get pretty deep into this and discussion, and we should have a motion on the floor, perhaps an amendment to that motion. And then we can properly handle this.
Okay, that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve budget item one, the levy adoption, which is Romeo twenty twenty dash zero three nine.
So moved.
Councilmember Huntington, okay?
Second, Sullivan.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Discussion.
Yeah, go ahead. This would be the time to make.
I'd like to make, I would like to formally, formally make an alternate motion approving resolution R twenty twenty dash zero three nine with the contingency that the, it also includes the outdoor pool from September one through December thirty-one.
You mean?
Oh, I'm sorry, indoor, indoor pool.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is Councilmember Krogman. You, Mr. Kirby is making a motion to amend the main motion and add in the indoor pool as stated here on the screen with the dollar amounts of overall sixty-eight, one fifty-three. And that's basically what it would amount to.
Thank you.
Alter the motion approving resolution twenty, opening indoor pool on September first through December thirty-first, resulting in two million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and six dollars, which is an increase of two and a half percent, sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars. Discussion.
This is not an alternate motion. This was an amendment to the main motion.
Yep, if, if I can, if I can just chime in and just kind of maybe clarify a couple of things. So we have a motion to adopt the resolution as is. Councilmember Kirby has offered a motion to amend that. So that's the, that's the consideration on the table right now for city council to evaluate. If, if there is a vote on that amendment, and that amendment fails, that the whole resolution doesn't fail, it just means the amendment fails. That makes it clear.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Kirby for the amendment for the increase of sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars for the opening of the indoor pool. Is there a second to that amendment to the motion? Seeing no second, that amendment to the motion is defeated. We now go on to the original motion. We've got a motion and a second from Councilmember Huntington and Councilmember Sullivan. Any discussion on that? Administrator Krugel, if we can enough to roll call vote for the resolution for approving the twenty twenty-one proposed final general fund budget, the twenty twenty-one resolution Romeo twenty twenty dash zero three nine.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Fabelis.
Hi.
Councilmember Huntington.
Hi.
Councilmember Kirby.
Hey.
Councilmember Krogman.
Hi.
Councilmember Schleter.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
And Mayor Haig.
Hi.
All right, motion passes six one.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Krogman. May I speak for a moment?
Go ahead, please.
I, I, I think we need to understand that this does not mean the pool, indoor pool will be closed forever.
Without a doubt.
I would think that what we need to do, and not necessarily tonight, but make some plans for one of the next couple of meetings, is to find a way to get a plan for how to make that more viable, better income, more usage. And not, not just write it off, but realize we've not voted to have it open the next year. It could still open if we can find the finances by the end of the year. But we have a mayoral task force appointed. We could even wait until the turn of the year and have Councilmember Kirby, who will then become the mayor, appoint a task force to look into this possibility. I, I don't want the public nor anyone here to think it's, it's a, it's a totally never again type situation. We had to make a tough decision tonight, and I think we need to look forward, not backward, so.
Without a doubt. I, I certainly concur with that, Councilmember Krog. Administrator Krugel, what's the next resolution? Or we're gonna do the motion for the, okay?
Yep, y- yes, sir. Yeah, so, so budget item number two is the CIP CEP adoption. And what we're looking for tonight is, we went through that during the presentation, we're looking at just a motion to adopt the five-year capital improvement, capital equipment plan for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five.
That being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the five-year capital improvement, capital equipment plan for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five.
This is Krogman. So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Krogman.
Schleter, second.
Thank you, Councilmember Schleter. Any, any discussion? Seeing none, or Councilmember Fabelis, did you have something? Seeing, seeing no discussion, Administrator Krugel, if you, please do the roll call vote for approving the five-year capital improvement, capital equipment plan for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Fabelis. Yes, sir. Councilmember Fabolous. Councilmember Fabolous.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby.
Aye.
Councilmember Crowman.
Aye.
Councilmember Slater.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Haig.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, motion passes seven zero.
Okay, the next one is a utility fund budget adoption. Okay, so I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution Romeo twenty twenty dash zero three eight, resolution approving our twenty twenty-one water sewer, electric stormwater and refuse fund rates, and approving the twenty twenty-one budget for said funds.
Let's, Councilmember Crowman, so move.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Second Sullivan.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Any discussion on this item? Administrator Krugel, if you're kind enough to go ahead and do a roll call vote for the motion approving resolution Romeo twenty twenty dash zero three eight, approving the twenty twenty-one water sewer, electric stormwater, refuse fund rates, and approving the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one budget for said funds.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Fabolous.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby.
Aye.
Councilmember Crowman.
Aye.
Councilmember Slater.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Haig.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. And the last action is to, for budget item number four, governmental fee schedule adoption, entertain a motion to approve resolution approving the twenty twenty-one governmental fee schedule and twenty twenty-one building department fee schedule, Romeo twenty twenty dash zero three seven.
So moved Sullivan.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan.
Huntington, second.
Thank you, Councilmember Huntington. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Administrator Krugel, if you're kind enough to do a roll call vote for resolution twenty twenty dash zero three seven, a resolution approving the twenty twenty-one governmental fee schedule and twenty twenty-one building department fee schedule.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Fabolous.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby.
Aye.
Councilmember Crowman.
Aye.
Councilmember Slater.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Haig.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Now, before we go on to agenda item seven echo, I would like to entertain a motion for, let's say, like, a five-minute recess. Please, I know that I could certainly use one. I'll make the motion for a five-minute recess.
Okay.
That was Councilmember Sullivan that, uh, seconded that.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's eight oh four, let's get together again at eight ten. Thank you, we're on recess. Okay, it is now eight ten. Entertainer motion to go ahead and reconvene the meeting.
I want some move.
Thank you, Councilmember Fabulous.
Slater, second.
Thank you, Councilmembers, uh, Slater. Uh, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, next item on our docket is seven echo sanitary rehab project final payment, Administrator Krugel.
Thank you, Mayor Haig, members of city council. Uh, before you tonight is a resolution that makes final pa- payment on a sanitary rehab project. Uh, we have, I believe, Public Services Kachara here to present on, uh, the summary and the requested action.
Good evening, Director Kachara. How are you tonight, sir?
Good, thank you, Mayor Haig. Yes, uh, in front of you lives the final completion for the sanitary sewer rehab work that was done on South, uh, South Main Street area and, uh, just off of the Ottawa Road, to the west of Ottawa Road there. So the first progress payment was already paid for thirty-six thousand one thirty-nine. The final amount due is for twelve thousand seven oh seven twenty-seven for a total project cost of forty-eight thousand eight forty-six fifty-two, which the city did have fifty thousand dollars in the, this year's CIPCEP. So, uh, we're asking for council to approve the, our twenty twenty dash oh thirty-six resolution.
Anybody from city council have any questions for Director Kachara? Seeing none, entertain a motion then to approve the resolution accepting work for the twenty twenty sanitary sewer rehabilitation project and approval of the final payment in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and twenty-seven cents.
So moved Sullivan.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan.
Slater, second.
Thank you, Councilmember Slater. Any discussion? Administrator Krugel, if you're kind enough to go ahead and do roll call vote for the approval of the resolution accepting work for the twenty twenty sanitary sewer rehabilitation project and approval of final payment in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Fabolous.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby.
Aye.
Councilmember Crowman.
Aye.
Councilmember Slater.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Haig.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item on the docket is seven Foxtrot, approve resolution accepting work for the water electric meter replacement project and approve final payment, Administrator Krugel.
Thank you, Mayor Haig, members of city council. Uh, this, uh, project is a, a long time coming, I'll say. We've had, it's had our, its struggles um, and challenges, uh, but, uh, we are proposing the end of this project and, and making the final payment, so uh, I will turn this over to Public Services Director, Director Kachara to, to present and, and, uh, make the final request.
Welcome back, Director Kachara.
Thank you, Mayor Haig. Uh, yes, so for the, uh, AMI metering project final payment, uh, as you see there on the slide, we have, uh, currently two thousand two hundred and nineteen of active installed electric meters. Uh, we have sixteen remaining electric meters to switch out, and then every single meter that, uh, can be AMI will be AMI, so, uh, staff has done a great job of getting this converted over, getting all the accounts switched over in the billing system, getting all that moved. Uh, for water meters, we have two thousand fifty-four, that is all the active water meters. We have zero active water meters that are non-AMI that can be. So, uh, another kudos to that staff for getting out there and getting all those wrapped up. That was a great job. Uh, total amount, uh, for the project that was approved from government, government capital corporation is one point five three million. Uh, approval of this pay request will bring the final project total up to one point four two five million. And with that, we are asking for council to approve resolution twenty twenty dash oh thirty-five and to submit the final, uh, payment paperwork to government capital corporation for seventy thousand two sixty-seven eighty-seven.
Thank you, Director Kachara. Question for you, sir. You said that you had sixteen, sixteen, was that one six meters still left for the electric meter to complete the project?
You are correct, Mayor. One six meters remaining.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Director Kachara? Seeing now entertain a motion to approve resolution Romeo twenty twenty dash zero three five, accepting work for the water and electric meter replacement project and final payment of seventy-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-seventh cents, and approval to submit dispersal request to government capital corporation for seventy-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents.
This is Councilmember Crowman, so move.
Thank you, Councilmember Crowman.
Fabulous, second.
Thank you, Councilmember Fabulous. Any final discussion on this item? Administrator Krugel, if you're kind enough to go ahead and take the roll call vote for approving resolution Romeo twenty twenty dash zero thirty-five, accepting work for the waste, for the water and electric meter replacement project and approval of final payment in the amount of seventy-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents to government capital corporation.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Fabolous.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby.
Aye.
Councilmember Crowman.
Aye.
Councilmember Slater.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Haig.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the docket is a variance request for three twenty-nine Fourth Street South, Administrator Krugel.
Thank you, Mayor Haig, members of city council. Uh, before you tonight, and I'll hand this off to Community Development Director DiMaggio, is a, is a variance request um, put in by a contractor for this property. If you're familiar with the property, it's a, it's a very small lot, so it doesn't conform with our, our current zone that would require a variance to build a house on it. Uh, this, this was, uh, brought to the planning commission on Thursday, so after the packet went out, we put this in as a placeholder um, in case the, the planning commission made a recommendation to approve the variance, which they have done, and then we're here tonight to, to finalize that, uh, that request, um, at council's discretion. So with that, I'll, I'll turn this over to Community Development Director DiMaggio, and, and she can present on the variance request.
Good evening, Director DiMaggio.
Good evening, Mayor Haig, members of the council. Tonight before you, we have a request for a variance. Uh, when someone would apply for a variance, it'd be because they have some prac- practical difficulties getting the lot to work, and it wouldn't be something that is of their creation. It's something that is maybe unique with the lot. And in this case, you will see that this is one of our more historic lots in town. Jasper, can you please go forward one more slide? This lot is located at three twenty-nine Fourth Street South. This lot is a fifty-five foot wide lot and a hundred and fifty foot deep lot. So it's approximately eight thousand two hundred and fifty total square feet. When the zoning code in this area was updated, we would now require lots to be at least seventy feet in width. So Jasper, if you go into one more slide, please. Uh, just a little background information on it, there was once a single-family home here that was condemned. This parcel predates our current zoning code. As I said, now we would actually require lots to be a little bit bigger, but at the time, a fifty-five wood, you know, width lot, it was actually a pretty, pretty standard lot size. The reason they're requesting a variance is they would like to build a single-family home on this lot, but because as a city we have changed our zoning, we now have bigger setback requirements than what we once did. And so this lot is, um, as I said, fifty-five feet in width, we would require it now to be at least a seventy-foot width lot. Um, so we would, we would like the lot at least to be approximately nine thousand square feet. As I said, we are short of that. We're at eight thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. So this makes it a challenge to build on because when you, we now want you to have seven and a half foot side yard setbacks, this lot is not meant for that type of setbacks. Uh, historically, it appears that this was about a five-foot setback on the sides. This is also a corner lot, which adds to the challenge a little bit. We typically ask you to be thirty feet from the right away or twenty feet from the corner of the property. Jasper, can you go one more slide, please? So the person who would like to acquire it, Ken Price, we asked him to give us a layout of what it was that he thought that he would build. So this is the proposed dwelling that he has shared with us. We shared it with the planning commission at their meeting, um, last week. So what he's proposing is that from the front yard, he would go back twenty-two point nine feet. From the side yard setback, he would go in approximately five feet. And then from the corner, the rise door corner from the edge of his property line, he'd go in about sixteen feet. He and I initially talked about having his driveway being accessed off the alley. There is an access right now off Rise Dorf, so there was an optional driveway location. I talked to the Planning Commission about this, staff would really prefer that he access off the driveway. I did talk to him today, he said this is not a deal breaker for him, but I think from construction costs, obviously, it would be cheaper to have a driveway off Rise Dorf. The reason we don't want that is there's only from where the driveway is now to the alley is about twenty feet. Really, if you're that close to an alley, we wouldn't, we wouldn't usually allow you to have two different cuts to have one for a driveway, we would ask you to use the alley. The other situation is if you ever want to park a camper or a boat or have two cars stacked, there wouldn't be room on that if he had the Rise Dorf driveway, but if he has a driveway off the alley, there should be plenty of room for parking in the future. I actually, right after the public hearing, one of our residents is a snowbird, so he gave me a call today, I hope that's a good term, snowbird, but he's a resident who's in sunny Florida right now. He gave me a call today and he does have some concerns, a neighboring property owner, about the five foot setback, so I'd like to have a little discussion with you about that. But I created some drawings kind of to show what that looks like in that area. So if you go to the next slide, you will see the property and the house, this is an old aerial, I found the old aerial of where the house was. So I would say where he's proposing to build is very similar to the historic home that was there. There's approximately um between the previous house that was there and the neighbors, there was about twelve and a half feet. I believe the neighbor has seven and a half feet on his side and that this property has had about five feet. So I also wanted to look and see what was in the area. Um that neighbor also to the house, if you continue to go further north, there's about ten feet, so about five feet on either side. If you go to the side yard neighbors, they also have about twelve and a half feet. There again, they were about five feet and about seven and a half feet, so these setbacks are very similar to what's already in this neighborhood. If you go one more slide, can you? I wanted to look at the other setbacks, so the home right next door into the south, or excuse me, to the north is about twenty-two feet back from the street, and so that's what we're proposing is the exact same thing. Um the neighbor then on the east side, there from the, I wanted to see how far they were set back from the road, so they're about twenty-three feet, that's very similar to what we're proposing today. If you go one more slide, I tried to pull everything together. So you can see if it were to go forward with the five foot setback from the neighbor to the north, he would have approximately sixteen feet to his property line, twenty-three feet to the road, and as I said, it would almost near the properties around there. I did talk to Nate Sparks, our city planner, and I expressed the concern of the resident who called, and he said, if you would like, we could amend the resolution to have it be six feet from the adjoining property line and fifteen feet from the property line. So that's completely up to you, the Planning Commission did move forward with it the way that it was. Um I appreciated the the neighbor calling today and talking and really one thing that he brought up that wasn't maybe brought up the other night is granted, the property foundation could be there, but it could have a roof overhang that really comes closer to his property and he's very nervous about if there's issues with water in this area. So I did reassure him that we are asking as part of the resolution that we do have a drainage and utility easement there. So if there are any issues that the city can hopefully help to make things better, also, we do as part of the building permit process, we want to see a grading permit because we want to make sure that they're grading the prop the soil properly, not to cause any issues for the neighbors. So those are some of the conditions of the of the resolution that you see tonight. If you go forward one more slide, I've actually listed those for you. So based on on how you'd like to vote tonight, I'm asking you to adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash zero four zero. It's a resolution approving a front side and corner setbacks for the construction of a home at three twenty-nine Fourth Street with the following conditions. That the driveway be accessed from the alley and that the existing curb cut along Rise Dorf should be restored, we don't want to have an opening there. We don't want people thinking they can drive on the lawn, we don't want any future issues. The applicant shall also grant a five foot drainage and utility easement along the north side of the property, that's between them and the neighbors in case there's any issues with water. Um construction shall generally adhere to the plans, so he, you know, Mr. Price could decide, I want to build a smaller home there. That's fine, he could build a smaller home, but he couldn't build anything bigger than what we're approving tonight because he'd have to fall in the setbacks that you approve. Also, we want to see a grading permit, we want to make sure, and we're going to have our city engineer Cory take a look at it, to make sure that the grading goes along with with making it be friendly for the neighbors, not having any water issues. So as usual, I went quite fast, do you have any questions for me from a staff perspective?
Director DiMaggio, my question would be, so instead of the six foot and fifteen foot setbacks that you had talked about previous, after your conversations with uh Mr. Sparks, he's saying that it would be okay to go with the five foot and sixteen foot setbacks?
Yeah, Nate, that that was originally what it was, and that's why we came up with the five foot and sixteen foot. But after speaking with the neighbor, they definitely have some concerns, they would like to see it more of a six fifteen, or they'd even like to see seven and a half feet. But I told them that we don't feel comfortable having a house any closer to the road than that. Obviously, something could happen and we don't want there to be an issue if someone were to accidentally veer off that they could hit the house, we don't want the house that close to the road.
Anybody else have any questions for Director DiMaggio?
Mayor Hake, member Sullivan.
Well, head Councilmember Sullivan.
Stan, both the concerns that were emailed, do you men address?
Yeah, the first question that was emailed was from the neighbor, as I said, he would like to see a bigger setback. Historically, that was what was there, but I'm not sure if there were issues previously, he didn't really say that there were issues, but just from his perspective, he wants to make sure that he has a good relationship, I think, going forward with with the home and the neighbors that are built, they don't want to have any water issues, you know, that isn't something that we want either. The other resident asked a question when how far in advance that we send out our meeting notices. Um per our statute, we have to send them out at least ten days prior to the hearing, but no more than thirty days. And those notices did go to the neighbors who live within three hundred and fifty feet of this property.
Okay.
Those were the two questions, you're welcome, sir.
So everybody that lived within the three hundred and fifty feet were notified for the public hearing on the on the tenth of December, correct?
Yes, sir, we sent out the notices on November twenty-fourth. Unfortunately, as I said, the neighboring resident does winter in Florida, so it took a little bit longer, so that's why he missed the hearing, he got the 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 notice on Saturday. But it is a good thing that you don't, you know, you don't see this right away, so he still had a, you know, chance to be able to call me and talk to me about it and I was able to all of you. And as I said, he did call today and he and I had a really good talk about it, so I'm, I'm, you know, I would like to help him with the seven and a half feet, really, there just isn't enough room on this size lot for that give.
So anybody else have any questions for Director DiMaggio?
Ma- Mayor Hake and members of City Council, I do, I believe that there's a somebody here that wants to make a comment from the public. Um I just realized, I just noticed that he has his hand raised, so um I don't know if you want to make it the appropriate time to to allow this individual to speak on the matter, uh but but we should allow public comment.
This is, no, this is Councilmember Kroegman.
Councilmember Kroegman.
Public comment, that is the purpose of the Planning Commission holding a hearing. I'm not saying not to do it, but I think we, I I think this would not normally be done, but I think we should go ahead, because so unclear.
And let me just clarify, generally, we allow public comment for the agenda item, I don't know if this is a, I don't know what the actual comment is, I have no I have no knowledge of what what they're going to actually comment on, but it could be something, I don't know.
As I said, I'm in favor of having it, I just think we need to make it clear that the hearing portion has been concluded.
Yeah, I I concur, Councilmember Kroegman and Administrator Krugel, let's go ahead and give the benefit of the doubt to this individual, find out what he or she may have to say.
Yeah, so Donald, if you have your hand raised, I will unmute you and you'll be able to speak, you'll have to unmute yourself too, so I'll unmute you right now and it looks like you're ready to go, so I'll give it a shot.
Well, hopefully everyone can hear me, I appreciate the time and the effort you've put into this. Uh my name is Don Buchanan and I am the homeowner at three twenty-five South Fourth, which shows on the drawing of the variance, I own the property to the north. Uh one of my main concerns, well, first off, I should admit that the letter of the public hearing was not received by me and until last Saturday. And I was unable to attend the planning and zoning meeting. Uh however, thanks to Samantha, I was able to convey my concerns with her. My main concern is, once I found out that the setback for the proposed house uh did not include the two foot overhang, I am afraid that due to the length of that house, there's going to be an awful lot of runoff. So far, I've been very fortunate with my draining system and putting on uh rain gutters which pretty much keep the water away from my house and vent it towards the rear. Uh does me very well, I've had a fairly dry basement because of that. Um I'm in in agreement with the five foot drainage easement that was proposed. Uh I would also make a point to indicate that my telephone utility and possibly the one for this property is already within that five foot proposed easement. So it's totally on my neighbor's property, it crosses out from behind my corner underneath my back sidewalk and goes directly across into their property uh to the south, so I did want to make you aware of that and my recommendation would be for a seven and a half foot uh setback. I understand the builder would, you know, love to make a decent profit on this project. I did notice that he, what he's asking is to put in a larger house on a lot that normally held a twenty-five to probably a thirty foot house. Uh as my house is only twenty-four and the one to the north of me uh is probably the same size, so there we are. That's all I have and I thank you, if you have any questions, I'll remain.
So anybody have any questions for Mr. Buchanan? Thank you, Mr. Buchanan. Anybody from City Council have any questions?
Jasper, can you go back to that first picture with the measurements and I just want to take a look at that again?
Uh this one here or or another one?
No, the first one.
Yep, okay, thank you, okay, yeah.
Councilmember Sullivan, did you have a recommendation on this?
Uh not at this time, no.
This Councilmember Kroegman, I think we need to be clear, I want to get a clarification. We're simply approving the things that are in this resolution, we're not approving a dwelling or the actual size of that dwelling. That's another, another permit process coming down. We're looking at the general variance thing. I would appreciate seeing the resolution so we we can can look at the the setbacks that are set there, can we get that in front of us, please?
Yeah, give me one second here.
Yeah. We've got that actual resolution, so Administrator Krugel will pull up for us.
So I'll zoom in because I know it's it's challenging to see it sometimes, so.
And now if you go down to somewhere in the actual recommendations.
So that whereas with the seven and a half foot, I believe.
Where is the part that talks about the setbacks?
Sorry.
Yeah, that's up just a little bit, so it's actually on the first page Jasper. We kind of blew by it, it was one of the whereas's.
Yeah.
Yep. There you go, so um it is, whereas our two district requires setbacks of seven and a half feet, twenty, but up right above it says the applicant wishes to construct a house that is five feet from the north lot line, fifteen feet from the corner lot line and twenty-two point nine feet from the front lot line.
So if we were to amend that, it would be six feet from the north and fifteen feet from the corner?
Yes, sir.
Why is that not in the, that's not in the resolution, that's in the whereas.
So the conditions are what actually go below, if you scroll down to the conditions, those are what go in the following, that this is what he's proposing and that is what he has proposed. So the conditions of us approving this are that he has to access from the alley, he has to replace the existing curb cut, he has to grant the five foot drainage and utility easement, he has to construct, they basically, the construction shall generally adhere to the plans.
But we're not, but in the resolution, we're not required to have the setbacks.
Yeah, I I get, if I may, Councilmember Kroegman, Mayor Hake, I think yeah, what Councilmember Kroegman is saying that is that the setbacks should be defined in the in the now therefore be a result to kind of really solidify what those requirements are.
I would concur.
And we can add that.
One thing to point out though that we talked about earlier is that he could choose to build something smaller, those could be bigger. You know what I mean, he could choose to build a twenty-four foot house as what we just talked about, but he can't go over. So that's why you generally have to adhere to the plans that you're submitting.
But we would simply say then the setbacks must be at least and then go forward.
And you could do that, but um and that's where it says above, but those, basically those plans that he's showing us, you know, because right now, he just, I don't even know for sure if this is the building that he's going to build for a hundred percent. Right, I mean, he doesn't even own the lot at this point, so as you said, that will come during the process where we review that, but at a minimum, he has to meet these standards.
And the rest of it would be taken care of during the permit process, correct?
Yes, sir, so that's where we verify that he's at least meeting the portion of the resolution that talks about the five feet, the sixteen feet. As I said, he could choose to have eight feet and twenty feet and, but he can't go, this is the, that is the closest or I don't know if closest is really the right term, but he couldn't put, put it right on the property line is what we're saying. He has to stay out of that five foot drainage and utility easement.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Kroegman, or did you have, did you want to?
I don't, if it's not in the resolution and the therefore, it's not the legally effective part, the whereas's are just language. This is the part that binds the builder, in this case, the owner, the potential owner apparently. Let me look at it. Let me look at it.
Yeah, if I may, I can say, Councilmember Crowman, and what I've done is I've added another section to this resolution, section number five. So the applicant, the applicant should construct a house that has a minimum north lot setback of five feet and a south lot line setback of sixteen feet. So if you would choose to go with a different amount, you could modify these numbers to either be six or fifteen, you know, whatever you would like, but I think, I think that would satisfy your request, Councilwoman, Councilmember Crowman.
Does. No, that's what I was trying to figure out how to do.
Yeah, okay.
You're doing it.
Now, let me ask you this, Director DiMaggio, now in regards to what Mr. Buchanan just brought to our attention. Now with the addition of this fifth bullet point, does this look like this is going to take care of the situation? Of course, it's not the seven-and-a-half that he would like, but is this something that seems to be doable now for the city as well as the builder?
Well, and I think so, and I think that's, that five-foot drainage and utility easement is huge, not being able to build in that five-foot. It's up to you, though, if you want to try to move it over a little bit more, you could go to six feet and fifteen feet from the south. The Planning Commission did recommend it as proposed by the builder, but it's completely up to you. As I said, unfortunately, we didn't know that this resident, I hadn't heard from any residents. So to hear from him later, you know, unfortunately, because of where he was located, the, the letter didn't get there in time, but you know, we have heard from him now. It's up to you if you wanted to try to make it six feet. I'm not sure if that extra foot would satisfy a ton for him, but it's completely up to you.
Okay, this is Councilmember Crowman. We've added number five here for discussion. I would say I would want the six and fifteen formula, six setback on the north, whatever. That's not what the gentleman called us, or seven and a half, but.
Right.
Trying to respect the work of the Planning Commission and of the applicant and of the neighbor, so.
Good.
I don't, if somebody wants to talk about the other, I'll be willing to make a motion as it sits, as you see it right now, adding number five to the therefore with the lot setback of six and fifteen as shown. And I'll, I don't want to muck things up, but if I can speed them up, I'll help. So, Mr. Mayor, if I will, I will move that resolution as it reads with those changes, taking that change into effect. The addition of number five.
Schleter, I'll second.
So we have a motion to go ahead and accept Romeo twenty-twenty dash zero four zero as is with the additional change made tonight with the six foot for the north and the fifteen feet from the south.
And, and just for a sake of clarity, I, I want to update this whereas as well to reflect that, that motion. And we can change, if this motion doesn't pass, then we can, we can change that and modify it back, but I want to make sure that that has been changed as well from the original resolution that was sent out today.
So we have that motion. Is there a second to Councilmember Crowman's motion? Thank you, Councilmember Schley. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Mayor Hag, Member Sullivan.
Go ahead, Councilmember Sullivan.
So the request by Don was seven-and-a-half here, correct, Sam? That was his ask?
Yes, sir. From a staff perspective, though, we don't want to go any less than that fifteen feet. I, I think from the edge of the curve, then you're about twenty-two feet. So I, I really don't feel comfortable pushing it out towards the road any further.
Okay, so essentially we moved that back to six. So with a two-foot overhang, there'll be four feet from the overhang to the property line, correct?
If there is a two-foot overhang, yes, sir.
Potentially.
I haven't seen the building permit plans yet, so I'm, I'm sure exactly how the roof line will look.
But I mean potentially, typically overhangs are two feet?
Yep.
Okay.
And we still have, like I said, we still have the grading plan as part of this and we'll have Cory take a look at it and we'll still have that five-foot drainage and utility easement. So I'm hoping that there aren't any issues, but we're trying to take every step we can in advance and there are other neighborhoods in town and as I showed you, other homes in this neighborhood that they are five feet. So you know, this has been done before, but we just want to make sure that everything is done correctly.
Okay. And then I actually want other questions, Sam. So the other thing that Don addressed in his email was something about the foot and a half from his deck. Do we know are those property lines? Or is that accurate or have they been marked yet?
Well, unfortunately, I couldn't find a deck permit that was issued for that. So there is a deck there that is a foot and a half. Typically, we wouldn't, we wouldn't allow that today. This obviously is a deck that has been there for quite a while. So this would be fairly close to the property line. As I said, it isn't something that we would approve moving forward. It is there now and, and he does have about seven-and-a-half feet on his side. But as I said, I couldn't find a layout, I couldn't find a deck permit at all, so I'm not sure when this was approved.
Okay, but we do know that those, the property lines, as they're marked now, saying he's got a foot and a half, that's accurate?
I believe so, yeah. We did, I did make the applicant Ken Price get a survey. So we know where his property lines are for sure.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Any other questions?
Yeah, this Scott. Sam and Jasper, could you bring up that picture that you had put up before about two thousand and ten, I think it was, picture of the old house that sat there? So that's pretty much in line with what the setback is that we're proposing, correct?
It is. It'll actually be a one foot more. So based on what the motion in the second is, I believe it will actually be one foot more, but it's very similar to what was historically there. I believe that home was five feet away from the property line.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to do the roll call vote then on the Planning Commission's recommendation on the variance request. So that we include the language set forth by Councilmember Crowman, that fifth bullet point that talks about the six-foot setback to the north and the fifteen-foot setback to the south.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Fabelis.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby.
Aye.
Councilmember Crowman.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Hag.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director DiMaggio. Final item on our docket tonight for our regular agenda, the Seven Hotel, the Performance Pay Policy Review. Administrator Krugel.
Mayor Hag, members of City Council, thank you for enduring a somewhat long council meeting so far. Tonight, I want to just talk about performance pay policy that I've included as a draft policy for consideration. I've talked to this, alluded to this since our comp and class study was approved back in November of twenty nineteen, that we would be developing something like this and bringing it forward to City Council for consideration at a, at a future date. Today is that future date. As you can see, the timeline that we have that I've outlined as far as implementation goes, we wouldn't be implementing this until February of twenty twenty-one. So if there are changes that City Council would like to see or additional discussion, we can have that additional discussion, but I, I did want to make sure that it gets put into the council agenda so we can start that process. So objectives, purposes of this, if you aren't familiar with the performance pay, this is, this is a change and it, it's, it's kind of funny. This was something that was brought up by, I believe, Mayor Hag at one of his first Personnel Budget Committee meetings when he first took over as mayor. I, I remember telling him, that's just not how it's done at a city level and sure enough, there's a shift in this direction in municipalities for this type of thing. And yeah, now we're considering it, so it, I find that kind of funny. But, but really what this does is it provides direct compensation incentives for high-performing employees. It establishes and maintains pay opportunities that enable the City of La Sure to attract and retain qualified, reliable and, and motivate, motivated workforce. This would only affect right now, non-union employees. All the union employees have collective bargaining agreements that have pay outlined in them. So I will be bringing this forward when those collective bargaining agreements are, the negotiations start for those. As a reminder, we have two collective bargaining agreements, one with the police force and then one with our I U O E group, which includes our utilities. Both of those go through twenty twenty-one with twenty twenty-two being the renewal year. This is a, probably a more difficult challenge to get those groups to accept something like this. But what I'm hoping to demonstrate is that through this process, we do, we do create an incentive for people to be high-performing. Instead of just, you know, being here and, and, you know, meeting expectations, you know, we want to, we want to make sure we're rewarding those high performers. So you know, we'll use some of the data if this is adopted to, to provide that information to the union groups to try to, try to get them to, you know, adopt something like this. So the policy itself, it's dependent on the existing performance evaluation system and scoring criteria. As a reminder, that's a system that's one through five, one being unsatisfactory performance, two needs improvement, three meets expectations, four exceeds expectations and five superior. Generally speaking, it, we do have a bell curve situation where people that are less than three percent are the same number of people that are over four or not, not three percent, a, a, a scoring criteria of three. And then that number's the same as the people who exceed or are above four. So everybody else is generally in the three to four range, but there are a couple of outliers that kind of give you that bell curve for, for that, that ten eighty-ten rule that I, I maybe have heard the mayor say in the past. That follows generally with what we've seen over the last couple of years for performance evaluations. So the performance plan criteria, so it's depending on the annual performance, so depending on the annual performance review, various ranges of pay increases are determined using the table that's included in the policy. That table is off to the right here for reference. The plan starts with an indication that an evaluation between three to three-point-two-five will result in an annual market adjustment comparable to our regional competitors. You can see that I'm, I'm not using the term COLA. We're kind of, you know, banishing that word. We're not using COLA anymore related to this, but we are talking about market adjustments and those are related to, you know, what's happening regionally. And you've heard me talk about that. When we're talking about, you know, in the past, we've made COLA adjustments to the, to the budget and those are generally, you know, what are our neighbors doing? We want to keep up with our neighbors to make sure that we're not, not getting outcompeted by our, our, our neighbors or our competitors for, for our staff. So generally speaking, if you would be an employee that, that gets a three to three-point-two-five, you would get that market adjustment annually, you know, anywhere from two to three percent based on, you know, what that recommendation is or where you fall on that scale. So subsequent increases are linear, except for that number five, which, which in all reality is unattainable. That would mean that you would get fives on every single one of the criteria, but you know, for the sake of, of having a complete table, I wanted to make sure that was in there. But in all reality, the likelihood of somebody getting all fives on every single criteria that, that's, that there's a question for is very, is impossible. So, but it is in there. But they are, they are linear based on the performance scaling. So you can generally see if you go up a quarter percent range, you'll see a one percent increase in, in what your, your, your potential merit increase would be. Now, I want to make sure that the nuance here is that this is all dependent on the budget. So this year, what we've done, and it's the same as twenty twenty, is we budgeted a four-point-five percent salary adjustment for all employees. So we're kind of in that middle of that range. The reason why we did that is because we have union contracts that have a four-point-five percent increase outlined. So that's actually a majority of our employees. And then the rest, what we've done is we've got four-point-five percent in there and that allows us to, to, or us by the managers and supervisors and directors to have the ability to, to award high-performing employees with more than a four-point-five percent with the idea that we'll have some employees that are lower than that four-point-five percent. So it really allows, this is a great tool, it allows our managers to manage the people and to incentivize, you know, maybe some of our younger workforce that just got hired to be a high performer because the current system that, that cities have in general or that we had in the past is, is really seniority-based. And if you show up and you meet expectations, you're going to get the same, you know, salary increase as somebody that, you know, let's say you're, you're a go-getter, high performer, you know, there's no incentive to do that other than you want to do a good job. But this is, in this case, we would be, we would be having the ability to potentially award that high-performing employee. So implementation of the plan, so just how this would all work out logistically is that we would perform annual and by we, it's the manager, supervisors, directors, myself. We would perform annual performance reviews that would take place annually from February first through February fourteenth, so the first two weeks of February. Then based on the results of those, those merit increases would be developed by the, the HR director and myself and then reported back in this two-week period at the end of February to the directors if there's anything that needs to be changed. Let's say a director comes in and says, oh, I got, I got three people that all got four-point-five, or four-point-five out of five and they all should get eight percent increases. I'm going to look at that and, and we actually have a module in our, in our software for payroll software now that'll say, wait a minute, you know, that's going to exceed that budget for that department. Some adjustments are going to need to be made. So there's a lot of QA QC reporting back and forth during those two weeks in February. And then at that time, you know, the director along with myself would, would then talk to the manager supervisor or their direct reports to myself or the director. We would have those conversations directly and, and talk about and tell that employee or those employees, you know, what their merit increase would be for that year. Keep in mind that this is only for eighteen employees out of our, out of our thirty-nine right now or thirty-eight right now. So there's twenty other employees that, that are bound by a collective bargaining agreement. So this is really only affecting less than half of our employees that we have at the city. But again, everything must follow the adopted budget. We can't exceed that budget. So, you know, and I've looked at other plans. I had the finance director, Zach Dowd, gather some of these plans that he's seen other cities implement and I pulled language out of those that I felt were appropriate for our city. The pay table itself was, was designed by, by myself and with input with, with city staff as far as how we should split this up and, you know, how we should provide guidance to the people providing the, the performance reviews and, and this, the table that was developed that's included in the policy itself really kind of narrows it down. So there isn't much real movement. It's, it's all dependent on the performance evaluation. And then the guidance is, is basically a one percent range that the, the manager can then, you know, move a little bit here and there. So you have a little discretion, but it's really based on the performance review itself, which, which directly, you know, relates to what I would consider a high-performing employee. You know, you would see that reflected in their performance review score. So a lot of information, pretty simple concept, I think. That I may be missing something. There may be some questions from City Council about this, but, you know, if, if we would like, if there's ideas that we would like to talk about or changes that would be made, you know, we can, we can do those. You know, this policy, I think, is in a good place where we're recommending from a staff perspective that we have a motion to approve the performance pay policy. And from there, I'll entertain any questions that anybody may have at City Council about the proposed changes to the way that we, we do our performance reviews.
Administrator Krugel. First off, I'd like to say that, as you well know, I could not take credit. We had Councilmember Crowman and at the time, Councilmember Johnson. Were very instrumental when we start talking about this performance pay model as opposed to what we were using. So I'd like to thank them for their hard work too. And then that has transgressed on into Councilmember Fabelis also once he got out of the Personnel Budget Committee. But in essence, just to kind of throw my two cents worth and as Administrator Krugel has stated, if you guys look at the reply that we received earlier today. if you guys look at the reply that we received earlier today, basically, we would have a number of individuals that right now would be looking at a four and a half to five point seven five percent increase for basically just being threes. And now with this particular type of system, as Administrator Krugel has alluded to, it gives our hard charge an opportunity to go ahead and put a few more dollars in their pocket and recognize their hard work. I think the whole process here is this only deals with our non-union employees. And one of the things Personnel Budget Committee has been talking about, especially over these last couple of years, is how important it would be to go ahead and adopt this type of language into our union contracts for the forty Niners as well as the L E L S. They should, they too should have this type of a performance based system in their contract. And I know this is something that Administrator Krugel will be putting on a straight there as he negotiates the twenty twenty one contracts here next year. So that's my two cents worth anyways. Anybody else have any questions or concerns?
Mayor Hag, it's Member Sullivan.
Councilmember Sullivan, please.
Jasper, can you, so you you referenced if if you had three people come in with a four point five between four and point five and five, how would you go back and make it? You said you'd have to make adjustments. How would you go back and make adjustments at that point?
Yep. So if if let's say for round numbers sake, those three individuals, that that manager has a budget of ten thousand dollars to to divvy up for their department. And they have three high performing individuals, you know, at four point five out of five. What what you would do and what the likely outcome would be is that that ten thousand dollars is split between those three individuals equally. Or you could figure out a percentage that is the same. So if it's, you know, if their wages are different, you could come up with a percentage. But really, we're 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 bound by what is available for each one of those departments. You know, and we might have some high performers. If the manager would really want to push and say, hey, I really need, you know, I'm worried about, you know, getting these employees or keeping them, retaining them. There is always the option, and we've never done this since I've been here, is to look at a budget amendment to to help out with, you know, compensating those employees. I don't foresee that happening, but if there would be a situation like that, we would have to work it out so that it does fall within the budget. And and hopefully we can, we can, you know, have some some foresight and, you know, this year we're doing a four point five percent. You know, if that doesn't work and that doesn't give us our flexibility, you might see me come in twenty twenty two and say, hey, you know, to really make this work, we're going to need five percent or or five point five percent, which which others note is is lower than what we did in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. Those are all five point seven five percent, just across the board increases. So, you know, in that situation where we'd have three people, high performers, we call them, we have some options. And really, what I would recommend is probably not the budget rec- budget amendment process. I would say, you know, likely those employees will be high performing the next year and we would try to try to get some more funds allocated to them. And we can kind of see that with past performance reviews as well. And based on those, that's that's kind of why we're at the four point five percent is, you know, as as Mayor Hag alluded to, looking at those numbers, that's where we generally feel the average will will come out to be.
Okay. I just want to make, I was just curious when you said adjustments would have to happen because, you know, from a union aspect, the biggest big push, the big reason they don't like this model or a lot of unions don't like this model is because it's easier to show favoritism to a favorite employee versus somebody that maybe isn't a favorite. So that's that's obviously the concern. That's why I was curious where you were going with them, making adjustments.
Yep, yep. And that's that's that, you know, you hit the nail on the head with that one. That's, I've already pitched this at the last time when we had some amendments that we've done to the the contract. So I've been communicating that this is going to come and I know it's going to be a challenge, but we'll try to get it adopted. It might be a little different than what we have right now. But at the end of the day, you know, the pitch is, you know, we want to be able to pay the high performing employees more. You know, the favoritism thing is is definitely a concern. And that's why, you know, we have a pretty bulletproof performance evaluation system where, you know, the employee gives their feedback, the the supervisor gives their feedback. And if there's a big difference between the two, then that gets worked out or discussed and and, you know, hopefully we, you know, the two and a half years we've done this, that's worked out fairly well. But, you know, the stakes are a little bit higher when you have something like this just going on. And really, to me, it puts, you know, a lot of, I would say, pressure on the managers to to do really good reviews and to document both things that that would exceed expectations and then also things you should work on. Because, you know, as a general rule, if you have anything that exceeds expectations, you should be able to pull out an example and say, yep, you know, this is what I've done to exceed expectations, in my opinion, and and both the employee and the and the reviewer can do that stuff right now and and pull out those specific examples. And that's going to be, you know, a very important if this does translate to the union contracts, that everything like that is documented very clearly so that, you know, the employees that that do potentially would would get those larger increases, that, you know, the reasons why are documented very clearly. So that's going to be a big challenge and and yeah, duly noted. You know, it will be, it will be challenging to to get these groups to to accept it. It has been done. I have gotten word that there have been union groups that have accepted terms like this. But, you know, it's all relative and specific to, you know, the the local group.
Right. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Sullivan, I just wanted to throw out my two cents on that. We certainly took this into consideration because of the union employees. And I would highly request your participation as Administrator Krugel works through the details as he negotiates the twenty twenty one L E L S forty Niners contract because of your expertise within the union. And we had that in mind as well. So I'm hoping you'll go ahead and accept that invitation to kind of be a wingman for Administrator Krugel on your expertise.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
What far we're doing.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns? Seeing now entertain a motion to approve the performance pay policy.
Sullivan, so moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan.
Fabulous, second.
Thank you, Councilmember Fabulous. Any final discussion? Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to recall vote to approve the motion or approve the motion for the performance pay policy.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Fabiles.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby.
Aye.
Councilmember Krohman.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Hag.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
We are now at our comments, reports and items of appreciation. And let me just get organized too. I got a big pile of paper in front of me here. Why don't we go ahead and kick off with Councilmember Schleter tonight?
I have nothing other than have a healthy and safe holiday.
Thank you, Councilmembers Schleter. Give me a second here. Say, Councilmember Huntington.
All right, Mayor, we have, last Tuesday, we had our last M R V T meeting for the year and my last meeting as your chairman. We didn't really do much other than develop a name for our cash system or our our pay system to M R V T, Easy Pay. That was about it. Other than that, we found on Wednesday, the legislature or wherever the funding for the CARES Act will continue in twenty twenty one. And so what we had proposed for rate increases for twenty twenty one will probably not come into effect till twenty twenty two, since we'll have funding from the CARES Act. And then, yep, it's really good news. Second of all, my H R A, we have, we haven't had a meeting for the last two months due to some personnel issues and just didn't have a meeting tomorrow, wherever. No, Wednesday, excuse me. Wednesday, four o'clock, our meeting to end the year up. And that is it.
Thank you, Councilmember Huntington. Before I move on, I'd like to personally thank you, sir, for all the hard work you've done on both the the M R V T and also the H R A and everything else you did back in the day with Murpuck. Your, all your efforts certainly have not gone unnoticed and we certainly appreciate all of your efforts. And I think on behalf of all of us on city council, we certainly appreciate the opportunity to work with you. And I'm only doing this today because I'm not sure because of your health situation whether you're going to be here next week or the next meeting. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Absolute. Thank you.
Thank you, as well.
Councilmember Fabiles.
About the only thing that I have was was our pack. But honestly, I'm going to leave the, you know, the details for our pack to the vice chair who who was running the meeting. And that's really what I had. So just happy holidays.
Thank you, Councilmember Fabiles. Well, with that said, let's go right on to Councilmember Sullivan then.
Thanks, Johnny. As Councilmember Huntington said, we had transit meeting. I do want to thank Mark. It's been a lot of fun working with you on that. And on council, if you're not going to be at the next meeting, thank you for your service to the community. As far as our pack goes, Johnny, correct me if I'm wrong, but we got reports and I think we tabled nominations for chair until next month, correct? And that's about it.
That's pretty much it.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anything. Other than that, I got nothing.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Councilmember Krohman.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Councilmember Kirby.
Uh, Ridge Board meeting, three P M on, and that's it. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Councilmember Kirby, what was that, the three P M?
Uh, Ridge View Hospital Board meeting.
Little less, and that's what day, sir?
Tomorrow, tomorrow, three P M.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. And before I pass it on, I just want to go ahead and reiterate to council in regards again to this situation with the outdoor or the indoor pool. As I stated before, we do have a contingency fund and we use that specifically for things that come up throughout the year. I can't imagine that it's been one year since I've been doing this job that we haven't had some kind of an unexpected situation that's occurred. And thank God we've got that contingency fund. And I would highly encourage the members of our pack to really think about what Councilmember Kirby mentioned tonight in regards to some ways to market. And I know that's something that goes through the R pack. And to Councilmember Krohman's point earlier about perhaps Mayor-elect Kirby would like to go ahead and put together a mayor task force on what we could do to go ahead and bring in more memberships as in twenty twenty one. Of course, there's going to be so much, guys, that we just don't know yet because though we know that the vaccine made its delivery today here in Minnesota and throughout the rest of the country, there's still an awful lot that we still don't know. We don't know what the success rate is going to be of this vaccine, whether it's Moderna or the Pfizer. There's a lot of unknowns and I hope that at some point during twenty twenty one, we actually do get back to some sense of normalcy. I think we all really appreciate that. But I just want to make sure that everybody understands that that's what, that's something that the Personnel Budget Committee struggled greatly with. Not only the community center, but also all the various moving parts, the various service centers associated with the community center. And it's not a done deal by no means. It's certainly something that the future Personnel Budget Committee will be looking at on a regular basis, I'm sure, as we progress through the COVID situation. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And Administrator Krugel, do you have any of your directors still online that would like to address council?
I believe Public Services Director Kachara is online. I'm not sure if he has anything to add.
Director Kachara, anything for us tonight, sir?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I was just hoping to get some good news regarding the community center on Wednesday when the governor hopefully is going to give us some new direction.
Thank you. Okay, Administrator Krugel, you're the hammer as usual, sir. What you have for us tonight?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Hag, members of council. Obviously, the holiday season is upon us and I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. And, you know, that's that's going to be here before we know it. Before that happens, though, we do have a joint planning commission E D A meeting on Thursday of this week. And what they're going to be really looking at is is some of the preliminary design for the Main Street. So ultimately, it's going to get to the city council. I would say if if anybody's interested from city council to getting an update on this, you know, you could join the meeting. There's no real action that's required for this. But really, to provide an update, the planning commission is the keeper of the of the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan is a major driving force to open Main Street. The E D A is is obviously a partner with the development group that's there with 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 some of the development agreements that we have. So they're both major partners in this opening. And and one thing that we want to make sure that we're all on the same page is that the the plans that that have been developed, that we've been working on internally and we have had input from adjacent property owners as well that they are in conformance with the comprehensive plan and the downtown master plan. So making sure that and and those are at the forefront of what we're looking at, what we're designing. But we want to make sure that, you know, the intent is there and that the groups that that kind of are the gatekeepers also agree. And if there's anything that we need to modify or change or input from them before that we get that information. So if you haven't seen it already, I think I'm very proud of what what Boltland Make, the consulting group, is coming up for as far as the design and the streetscaping and things like that. But, you know, we can look at it and and there can be changes. Ultimately, it's it's going to be a city council decision to approve the the plans and specs and authorize us to go out to bid. So we have to basically get the E D A Planning Commission and city council all on board with what we want to do there. But it is a very exciting time. You know, it's a major project that that's really going to change the city, I think, long term. You know, you drive by there right now and it's, it's just, it's crazy to me to look down that corridor and know that, you know, two, three months ago, there were buildings there and there was a pedestrian walkway. And, you know, we were just kind of finalizing the plans for this. And now you go down there and you can kind of envision what that street's going to look like and, you know, how the buildings, you know, line up and how that that boulevard is is going to be quite large and really conducive to a festival street. So, you know, where we can hold events and things like that. So I'm very excited about it. I think there's people in the community that are very excited and and, you know, we want to make sure that what we're planning to do next year and and hopefully next year, by this time, we're, you know, we're able to drive through that that road. Hopefully, everything we're doing is 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 on par with what the expectations are. So very exciting times for that. There'll be a lot of moving parts that we're that we're working on internally. But ultimately, you know, city council will be the final resting place when everything gets approved. So exciting stuff. If anyone's interested, I would, I would definitely chime in, I know, to that meeting. And, you know, if you do, just be careful not to comment and just get the information. But yeah, if if anybody wants a a specific look at what we're we're talking about too, you can reach out directly to me and I'd be more than happy to sit down with you with with Community Development Director DiMaggio about what some of the plans are for that area. So it's kind of the first kind of public unveiling at a public meeting on on Thursday. So it's kind of a big deal, but really, we want to make sure we get buy in from all the all the groups that we have and all the stakeholders in the area too. So exciting times. I'm very excited about it and and I I'm very excited for the community. So that's all I have.
What was, what was the time of that meeting, Administrator Krugel, on Thursday?
It's six P M and it's held virtual and and there is an agenda. If you go to our agenda center on our website, you can pull up the agenda. There's a a meeting registration link. You know, just be conscious of 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 open meeting law if you are a city council member. You know, don't make any comments, you know, just kind of keep it to yourself and watch and observe because you will get your chance to look at it. You know, and I want to make sure that the the planning commission E D A gets their fair shake at it without, you know, outside influence.
Thank you. Happy holidays, everybody. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Huntington.
Thank you, Councilmember Huntington. Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great one, you guys. Enjoy the holidays. Thank you.